conditional use permit is a permitted use in the zone. It's permitted through a conditional use permit process. The state has given clear direction through the courts. That unless there is a danger, a risk to health, safety or welfare of people or property in the vicinity. That these must be approved. If there's conditions that you can place on it to mitigate those concerns. You can place those conditions on it and then approve it. Another thing about conditional use permits is they run with the land. So this property, this suite one ten will forevermore, even with changes of ownership or management. Have the right to a dance hall and event space so long as it's not revoked for violating some of the standards or any of the conditions placed upon it. So I think that's, that's an important basis to understand. And I say that because I read a lot of the public comments that, that came to you guys. And I just wanted to kind of address those upfront. Some others, noise, noise again, was kind of the overarching concern. But again, that's regulated by the city. So the city has specific decibel levels that are permitted by the time of day and by the, the use that's receiving the noise. So that's already regulated in the code. We feel that if those aren't being followed, then that would be a reason to bring this back in front of you. And ask for the conditional use to be taken away. Character and feel of downtown was mentioned in, in some of the comments. Again, it's, it's permitted by condition in the downtown zone, has been for years. We have a number of these event spaces downtown and it's just the environment for this type of use. I think this is where people expect them to be. So we're not concerned with that. Difficult to enforce standards again. The, the code gives us the right to revoke this U P. And I've, 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 I've mentioned the, the fourth point there. Let me double check, make sure that's all I have to say. Yes. So any questions for me?
Thank you, Matthew.
So I noticed in the staff, in the staff report, it references the, the front doors, seven hundred forty feet from a residential zone. I kind of think I know the answer, but I'd like you to just clarify the zone is different than, I think there are tenants upstairs who live there, yes?
Correct. Yeah. I was, I was indicating the, the closest residential zone was that R C up in the corner.
But it doesn't, you didn't call attention to the fact that there are residential units above this. Can you help me understand why that's not highlighted here?
There are, there are distance requirements for the use and for parking for the use from a residential zone, not from a residential use. So all of D T one, D T two, that are downtown zones allow a mix of uses, including commercial office residential. So they're, they're going to be scattered all throughout everything in orange there, right? But the, the regulation is from a residential zone itself.
If I can build on that actually, so I went digging a little bit to see what sound limitations there might be. And I found in the part about dance halls, paragraph eight says, no musical instruments, stereophonic equipment, sound amplifiers or similar device shall be operated in such a manner. As to create a noise or vibration disturbance across a real property boundary. Now, most of these apartments, I understand are condos.
Correct.
So would that constitute a real property boundary?
I believe it would. I believe if it does go beyond fifty five decibels between ten P M and seven A M or above sixty five decibels in the daytime. Measured at those residences above it.
Okay.
That would be a violation.
Okay. I believe fifty five decibels is about a somewhat noisy dishwasher kind of level, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not very low.
Okay, thank you.
How many other levels are above this?
So there's, it's a seven, it's a seven story building, so there's six stories above this proposed use.
And, and when does the residential portion start or are there in between that, are there office spaces that?
Great question. I should have prepared an answer for that one. I, I honestly don't know where the residential use to start in this building.
One of the letters said they were floors.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. I, I know I saw that mentioned in one of the letters.
I, I, I can ask the applicant when they come up.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Aaron? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now invite the applicant to come forward. You will have fifteen minutes for your presentation. If you choose to use it, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding in the microphone following your presentation. If we have questions, we'll ask them at that time.
Thank you. My name is Claudia Esteban. I'm just the designer on this project and represent in A Urvia. So far, I think what Aaron have presented was pretty accurate, but what we want to present today, as far as the news concerned. The residential building, you start at the fifth floor. So there's about some distance in there. There's all commercial above this flooring. As far as that, I just, you know, I don't have much to add than more, more to that. More here in the architecture points. So if you have any question on that. And I don't think the owner was here today, so I apologize about that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Do you have any plans to soundproof it going from its current use to the use that you propose? Do you have any plans for what you, how you're going to keep those noise regulations?
No, we do present the plans on our permission metal, but we did not prepare for the sounding. There's different uses in the building right now. They have some other commercials. Suites in there, so that's why we thought that was not a concern. So no, then there's none of that.
Well, if I can, have you considered doing any testing? Like, I, I think for me, I would be concerned about approving this. And then, you know, two months into the, the use, that there's, there's noise complaints and then. And then ultimately this gets revoked, like that would be a horrible result. But so am I thinking like if you tested it, maybe we're able to go into units and, and measure, okay, this is what our sound equipment sounds like playing this music. And this is how it registers on floors five, six, seven, and, and to meet the standard of sixty five or fifty five decibels, we need to turn it down. After, you know, ten P M to this level.
Yeah, I understand that and I think that's, that's a good point and we can definitely propose doing some testing in there. I, I will say not to speak on the owner, but more than this, a dance hall, this, the purpose of this venue events center is more conference. For companies to gather in there and maybe have some lunch or, you know, any type of corporate event as well. As well as wedding, will that be more the concern of the noise as well, right? But I think the majority of the bands are purpose to be more corporate. It might need, need not showing explicit on the plans, but there is specifically a area where it's, they're going to present. It is, it's the purpose of it is to present and have videos in there and. All, all, all the, the media they need for corporate events. So I think that's where it's, this event is leaning more and I think the, the dance hall. Qualific, uh, uh, um, qualification was in, maybe not me, the, maybe not be the proper one. So that, that could be something we could explore and maybe could this be instead of a dance hall, a meeting rental or more corporate. That, that's, I know it's a question for you guys or maybe to help with Aaron, but just to put that in there to consideration, I know as well on the, the noise concern.
So, so this is more of like an event center than a nightclub type use?
Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions? Yeah, Matthew?
Two quick questions. One, it looks to me like on the plan, there's no actual outdoor space. Is that accurate?
No, there's no.
So I guess I wonder, just a, not a question, just wondering, I see doors or double doors or windows or something. I would imagine that on a nice evening, you want it open, but if it's loud, you maybe would be asked to close it or need to close it to manage the sound. Just something to think about. This five hundred and forty people concept or statement, right? This is a condition. Is that the word you used, right? I'm curious how you manage that. I've been in a lot of event spaces. I've never seen somebody counting. So I'm kind of curious how in your mind, you make sure you never go over the five hundred and forty people.
Well, that's a number that we recommend as, as an architect and our court analysis, that's the number for safety and what we believe is the best for. The coupon number that we can have at the venue. The venue as a square footage can have more capacity, even fit eighty hundred people and we actually push back on that and said. We should not have more than five hundred for safety. I know if people is not, certainly not counting as, as an architect, we. Do establish and I see in other projects to have occupancy number established in the building so we can see that. And yeah, I don't, I will not know how to regulate that as a sample as an owner or who is renting the venue. So that's hard for me to answer as an architect.
Okay, any other questions?
So if this is more of an event center, does that, that parking requirement, is that adequate? If, if you're having five hundred people come to an event center versus like a nightclub, I see people carpooling, I see three or four people coming in a vehicle together. Is that happening for a corporate event or are you expecting people to come by transit? Could you just address some of the parking?
So on the number could be say, so as I stated on the code, promo code, they have one stall, parking stall. Or four people, equivalent of four people. So we have hundred and thirty four stall, I believe, which is if we do the math, that will be exactly what we need for the amount of people that is. That we have established to be here. So yeah, if you, if you, if you have all the, the amount of stall you need on the parking lot.
I have a question. It's probably for staff, but I feel like before we open it for public comment, it might be useful to have. If this were not a dance hall, would it still need a conditional use permit as an event space?
So dance hall event space interchangeable in the code.
Okay, so it would still need it either way.
Same, same process, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, final call. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now open this item to public comment. If there are any neighborhood or district chairs present, we invite them forward at this time. Okay, before I go to general public, thank you for the reminder. I do want to acknowledge the letters that we have received for this item. I received letters from David Moran, Mark Roney. Michelle Blake, Brad Moss, Vanessa De Hart. And Mark Hedengren. So we have reviewed those letters and are aware of their contents, but you are also invited to come up and make a comment as well if you happen to be present. So with that, we'll go ahead to public comment. So Lisa's pointing out that I should mention that the last letter that I read was signed by a number of individuals. It was signed by Vanessa De Hart, Dirk De Hart, Michelle Blake, Joanne Knight, Mark Roney, Eddie Goacia. Stephanie Matthew Lewis, Wesley Earns, Greg and Annette Kranek, Art Wing, Gary Pryor, Scott Stornetta. And Michelle and Chris Markarian. Sorry if I pronounced any of those incorrectly. So we'll now open it to public comment for those who are present. You are invited at this time to come forward to the microphone one by one. You will have two minutes to make your comment. When your time is up, you'll, you'll hear a ding and your microphone will be muted at that time. Each person may make one comment during this session. If we have questions, we'll invite you up at the end. And finally, please start by stating your name and city of residence for the record. Thank you. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Vanessa De Hart and I am a Provo resident and I am also a resident of the Wells Fargo building. I, I saw that there was, I was made aware of the staff report just a half hour before this meeting. And I see why the tendency to maybe approve this looked fairly easy. The information in this packet is misleading. It says the current legal use is a vacant space on the floor of this commercial building. And only in one line in the overview, the last paragraph does it say. There are a variety of other businesses, office and residential uses. There are twenty residential condominiums in the Wells Fargo building with around fifty people that live there. The other part, relevant history that the space was a conditional. The recent history about the cosmetology school that was in there. What is relevant history is that in two thousand eight, there was a restaurant that occupied that space. The restaurant was Sparks or Spark. At times that restaurant, a couple of times they had a dance party. And the music and the vibration could be felt up to the floors. I am on the fifth floor. The owner was, wanted to work with us and he turned it down a bit. But it wasn't enough to satisfy the residents and the partygoers simultaneously. Two minutes is not a lot. I just want to say. To let this permit go forward, we'll leave the residents in a helpless state that we have to try to call for the police or something once the.
Sorry about that, but we have lots of people that want to comment tonight. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Brad Moss. I'm a resident of the building here in Provo. I'm also the H O A president and the property manager of the building. I have a number of things that I could comment on. But in talking to the owners and the owners representatives of that floor, which that floor is divided into. Four different commercial owners and twenty residential owners. And so it's not as simple as the owner of the building. Can decide how their section of that building will be used because it impacts the owner of the second floor. The owner of the third floor and the owner of the fourth floor, all of which are different owners, commercial owners. The seventh floor is also a different owner, so. The concept that the parking structure has four owners, each of the first four floors owns the, the parking structure together. And so the statement that they have a hundred and thirty five allocated spaces is not really accurate because two hundred of those five, there's five hundred spaces in the parking structure. Two hundred are allocated to the redevelopment agency of Provo. So three hundred are available for other uses and. To allocate hundred and thirty five of those remaining three hundred is not really the correct allocation. The other thought that I had was it seems like in the Provo ordinance, there's an exempt exemption. For an entertainment business relative to weddings and private corporate events. And so it seems to me that under the exception, what they're intending to use for this space for would be adequate and would not require a dance hall conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment on this item? Please come forward.
My name is Mark Hedengren. I'm a resident in Provo. I own Red Finch Lab, which is right next door to the proposed dance hall. And our building, I had a dance hall next to my Orem location, Red Finch Rental. And it brought a tremendous amount of crime. We had cigarettes thrown at other store owners. My staff had to clean and I had to clean hundreds of beer bottles every weekend. This was a much smaller entity too, maybe capacity of a hundred. We also ultimately had to break in in my own store. That was clearly a result of this. Our parking was just a mess. Anyway, I think one thing we're dealing with kind of the Provo's kind of going through a city transition. And if you go to other cities, they'll have one thing entities like these are created, there's conditions of like amount of security, amount of bouncers, cover fees. A lot of other regulations are on top of it. It's incredibly high profit margin built business. All you need is a room and music and you charge. That's amazing. And, but we do not have these regulations yet in place. I recommend getting them. But there is no way my building, which is virtually made in the sixties and a much innocent time, that's just basically pure single pane glass. Could withstand the type of break-ins I had in Orem. And I will just move my business. I'm already researching locations in Orem. The crime in downtown Provo really is overlooked. I have people sleeping out heroin trips in my front. We had a meth addict come in our store and really frighten one of my employees and give an angry speech outside the store and anyway. So I talked about this in the letter I sent you. Really, you have the family entertainment district, a bar nightclub district, and you have a college fund district. Anyway, all stacked up on one and that's just, you can have those districts, but you just can't have them all in the same place. Particularly your bar nightclub pawn shop district. I recommend moving that maybe down the.
Thank you. Anyone else here for this item? Okay.
Is it possible to put up a space plan before I talk about what I want to talk about? We have an actual space plan because this is a secure.
Yeah, we do not for this item. I do not believe. Is that correct, Aaron?
What that looks like?
Is that what we have? Okay.
Wait a second. That's, okay, what's the entrance in?
for an entertainment business relative to weddings and private corporate events. And so it seems to me that under the exception, what they're intending to use for this space for would be adequate and would not require a dance hall conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment on this item? Please come forward.
My name is Mark Hedengren. I'm a resident of Provo. I own Red Finch Lab, which is right next door to the proposed dance hall. And our building, I had a dance hall next to my Orem location, Red Finch Rental. And it brought a tremendous amount of crime. We had cigarettes thrown at um other store owners. Um with my staff had to clean and I had to clean hundreds of beer bottles every weekend. This was a much smaller entity, too, maybe capacity of a hundred. Uh we also ultimately had to break in in my own store. That was clearly um of resolved of this. Our parking was just a mess. Anyway, I think one thing we're dealing with kind of the Provo's kind of going through a city transition. And if you go to other cities, they'll have when thing entities like these are created, there's conditions of like amount of security, amount of bouncers, cover fees, a lot of other regulations are on top of it. Um it's incredibly high profit margin built business. All you need is a room and music and you charge. That's amazing. And um but we do not have these regulations yet in place. I recommend getting them. But there is no way my building, which is virtually made in the sixties and a much innocent time, that's just basically pure single pane glass, could withstand the type of break-ins I had in Orem. And I will just move my business. I'm already researching locations in Orem. Uh the crime in downtown Provo really is overlooked. I have people sleeping out heroin trips in my front. We had a meth addict come in our store and really frighten one of my employees and give a angry speech outside the store and anyway. So it I talked about this in the letter I sent you. Um really, you have the family entertainment district, uh bar nightclub district, and you have um a college fund district. Anyway, all stacked up on one. And that's just, you can have those districts, but you just can't have them all in the same place. Particularly your bar nightclub pawn shop district. I recommend moving that maybe down.
Thank you. Anyone else here for this item? Okay. Yeah, we do not for this item. I do not believe. Is that correct, Aaron? Is that what we have? Okay.
Okay, what's the entrance and egress on that?
Please, please come to the microphone.
Oh, I I still don't see the entrance in the egress because this is a secure building for the twenty count condo owners and Greg Kranick.
And state where you live, too.
Uh we live in eighty-six uh University, six oh one on the top floor. So there's the entrance. Where's the egress? You only have one entrance and that's it? And that's okay with fire code?
It looks like there's egresses on the top. Is that correct?
On the top. Where are the elevators?
It's ground floor, isn't it? It's ground floor.
Yes. Well, anyway, we we have to, it's a secure building, so after eight o'clock, we have to have a certain fob to get in. But if you have people that are wandering around there, that takes away the security of the building. That's my, one of my uh problems. Are they, do they have security on staff there? I don't see five hundred and forty people fitting in there.
Yeah, so the occupancy is set by code. Um and we will address the security requirements after the public comments.
Okay. Are there, are they serving food and beverage in there? Are they making? Is that part of the the
Yeah, so I'm I'm sorry, but this is a time for comments. If you want to make those comments and ask that they be asked, we can take
Oh, okay, yeah. I would like to know about uh the the food and beverage and and what they're serving in there. And the demographics that they're having. I guess I wasn't here for that, but yeah, uh if I if I could, I'm against this.
Okay, thank you. Please come forward.
My name's John Singler. My primary residence is Red Bluff, California, but I own a unit in the uh eighty-six uh North University Avenue Wells Fargo Building. Um I wanted to point out that uh there were some good points made about the minimal amount of of sound that's that's allowed to be released from the building. I I kind of wonder what the decibels are in here right now with this uh with this sound system, and I would be concerned um for the for the future tenant and um and their their use of the building. The opening of doors to the outside. Um so if if they're at fifty-five decibels um and somebody opens a door to the outside, the decibel level is gonna go up outside the building. And so y- you'd have to have it low enough inside the building, so when you opened a door, it wouldn't go up. Um I agree with the security concern. I don't know if they're gonna, what bathrooms are gonna use, if they're planning on using the bathrooms that are in the in the hallway there, in the secure section of the building, or if they're planning on uh putting their own bathrooms, and it kind of almost looks like they're their own bathrooms, but I I can't tell for sure. I also uh think that it's it's a it's an area of the code that needs a, needs to be addressed. Uh we we've addressed that the the residential neighborhood um that's uh a distance away is far enough away for from the parking structure and from the from the dance hall to meet the standard, but it seems like the residents above in the in the building are being overlooked, even though it's a mixed use building. Um I'd be pretty disappointed if I owned an office and there was a dance party going on next door and and it was interrupting my business.
Thank you. Anyone else here for this item? Please come forward.
Dirk De Hart, uh Provo resident. Um my residential unit is the first one right above this dance hall. We, as my wife explained, Spark used to be there. We know what the sound does. Um those are steel girder beams that come up through the building right up through our bedroom, and the vibration is there. We've already experienced it before. Also, uh as far as sound is our biggest concern, um even though we're that many floors above them, we've experienced it before. We know what the sound is gonna sound like. We've had it before. With no soundproofing, it's gonna just vibrate and come right through there. We, in the construction of this zone, we've had the construction noise all vibrate through the whole building. Obviously, that's different than music, but it does the same thing, especially the the bass coming through the the steel girders in that building is is horrible. So certainly, the only recourse we have if this is is approved is calling the police, and we have unfortunately done that when Spark was there, and it's a terrible route to go. It's like, then then we're fighting with our neighbors. Um that's not the, that's the only recourse we have, though, if it's approved and and they go above the thing. And the police, bless their hearts, want to help, but a lot of times the answer was, hey, they're almost done. Or it will be over soon um that we got from the police. So, yeah, great, and that's the only recourse we have to to uh mitigate that, and that disturbs our night. That's a whole night ruined if I have to call the police.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else here for this item? Okay, not seeing any, we will close the public portion um and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Thoughts, questions that we have? Do we want to call anyone up?
I just want to clarify, the the apartments on the fifth and sixth floor and in between this and those, there is commercial offices, okay?
Right, yep.
Okay.
So floors one through four are all commercial, also floor seven is commercial, five and six are where the condos are. Matthew?
Uh Aaron, I think I'm gonna direct my questions to you, if that's okay. So you've, I assume you've dealt with other conditional use permits where the conditions, right? That's what you said, is that we're we're kind of, if they meet the conditions, we say it's okay. But we could add conditions, right? Is that my understanding that correctly? Okay. So uh first of all, we've talked a lot about noise. It's been brought up, this vibration issue. Is that connected to any of these conditions, or could we add something about that? I don't know how you measure that, but
I was just searching for anything that mentions vibration in the code. And other than it being falling under the nuisance um regulations, there's nothing specifically talking about vibration like there is for noise. Um I also just wanted to clarify the noise. I think there might have been a misunderstanding based on how I stated it. Um the decibels aren't held within this unit, this one ten. If that noise from that establishment is in the residence on the fifth floor, and they measure it within the residence at over fifty-five decibels, that's where that fifty-five comes into play. It can be louder than that within the actual unit. I didn't know if that was clear or not.
So the condition right now has to do with the codes, decibel levels. Is there anything about, so there's nothing about vibration because it's, we're, I don't know how to figure that out, but maybe we could add something. I don't know, right? We could?
I mean, i- it's something to study. It's, there's nothing in this in code addressing it right now.
So and in addition, so could we add something about some acoustical kind of protection measures? Or is that outside of the purview of like the conditions? If the rule is if it meets that fifty-five decibel measurement, fine, or could we also add, but we expect them to do something X, Y, Z? Could we add that? Is that something?
I I think you could if there was uh finding a fact that the noise level would go beyond the the regulated allowance. Um but bef- without knowing that for sure, I think it'd be difficult to place a condition on something
Okay.
on on an assumption or a guess.
So similarly, could we have a condition about security?
There is already into the code um in in six, title six. Um the the Provo PD, if there's any concern or a history of concern, any any warrant, I guess, anything that warrants them to enact this, they could um enforce a rule that makes the establishment have two security guards on staff anytime the event goes over two hundred people. Um so that, or anytime alcohol is served, that's another time that Provo PD can tell the people running the business, they have to have two security guards on staff through through the event.
But we couldn't make that a condition currently, that
It's already in the code, so you wouldn't need to make it a condition. I've already conditioned that by saying it has to follow those standards.
If you look at our report, it specifically says as one of the conditions that PCC six dot fifteen, which is the security standards, is met.
Yeah, so it's already tied into it.
Um if I can build on that as well, it says across any real property boundary. So really, the closest property boundary might be the commercial stores right above it. We just learned that it's a different owner.
That's right.
And so it would actually be there that it would have to be fifty-five, right?
It's a higher decibel level for a commercial use, um but yes, they would still be regulated based on that being a separate property.
And also next door, right?
Yes.
Because it's on the corner of the building, there's gonna be a property owner.
On the east side that they shared a wall with or across the the interior hallway to the north.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Any other questions for Aaron while we have him up here?
I I have one. Um the property manager mentioned that um there are some discrepancy in the parking allocation. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, you you have the letter from Harris Investment Group. Um that's what we went off. We understood that they own and manage a a good deal of the building and the parking. Um so when we have a official letter on their letterhead saying they have a hundred and thirty-five spaces, we take them at their word.
And just for those in present, it specifically says it is not coming out of the two hundred and four that the that have been loaned to the city. Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Um can we put additional restrictions on noise beyond what's in the code?
It's a good question.
I mean, fifty-five decibels is a noisy dishwasher, but I wouldn't necessarily want that in my bedroom every weekend.
Right, that's, it's a fair question. I don't know the answer, Bill. Do you know if they can be more restrictive than the city code?
I don't think so, otherwise you're legislating.
Yeah, uh like CCNRs and HOA could enforce something tighter than the city code does, but I don't think we could go more than what the city code or go less for that matter. Um because then we're essentially doing a text amendment without doing a text amendment.
Right.
There was a nightclub in Provo maybe fifteen years ago near New Skin location. Maybe twenty years ago.
Before my time.
Uh I'm wondering if maybe you know anything about the conditions that were in place there. Um what kind of were there crime issues? Were there noise complaints?
I don't. Um I do know of one, and some of the plan commissioners do remember one um that ran foul of these issues. They they had noise complaints, they had crime complaints, and in the end, they were shut down and and forced to move out of the the venue, the the property they were using.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
I have one more.
Oh, sorry.
I was just waiting. Um the the building doesn't, like I've been inside of this space before, and I can't imagine five hundred and forty people in that space for any purpose, dancing, meetings, anything. Is is it possible that they won't, when it goes through, if this were approved, when it goes through for approval from the departments, the fire department would say that's too many?
Exactly. So this is the first step to to allow these. The they have a pending building permit right now. Uh it's pending review. Uh one of those reviews is gonna be the fire department. If their number is less than ours, then we go with their number.
Okay.
The building code also has limitations on occupancy, so that may come into play.
And that's like square footage based for the building code?
Ingress, egress, and bathrooms.
Okay, thank you.
And the building rating. Mr. Chair, there were some questions asked to the owner about beverage and food service. At some point, if we could get those answered, that would be great.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask another one?
Yeah.
Um I wondered about the security because I do remember that building has elevators and so, but it's not secure all day long. Am I correct? It's only after certain hours that it becomes a secure space. So if people are in here and then wander into the secure spaces, but they're not secured yet, how do we, can we put in any provisions to protect from people wandering the building?
Um to me, that seems like more of a a building management thing. It looks like there is one door that would go from this space out into the rest of the building, there between the bathrooms. That's the only interior access between this suite and the rest of the building that I can see. Um so maybe a a easy answer is just to keep that locked.
Can can you do that? Can we put that as a condition that that stays locked? Or is that a fire code issue?
Why don't we have the property manager address that?
Okay.
Well, there's probably the building and fire might want have some issues with that. I don't, I'm speculating.
But it's it's not a bad thought.
I've also seen that. There's, I've been in buildings before where there's like a restaurant on the ground floor and the door that takes you during business hours to the hallway is locked after certain hours, so it doesn't seem out of whatever they decide, whatever we decide, whatever the building decides for their own security.
What's hard is you do have businesses on the second through fourth floors that need access, right? So they can't just lock the hallway all the time, or people can't get there. Okay, thank you, Aaron. Okay, so um we do have some questions about food and beverage service. Do you happen to know the answers to those?
Um so as far as I know, they just have a small kitchenette and that area against um the hallway, the vegetable hallway, and that just meant to have some fridge in there and yeah, oh, great.
Don't push that button.
So they just have a fridge. Wait, this one? Just keep, oh, there you go. This is the area, the kitchenette. Um you could notice here, maybe there's just a um sink, and then they have a refrigerator just for beverage. So that's just to provide um you know, some snacks, maybe some some sodas and stuff. As far as I know, it's not planned to have any alcohol in there. Um I will believe they will need to have a a permit for that, and that's separate and out of my scope. Um so this look door, what we do to um approach that privacy or keep that locked is just have a safety hardware there in case of emergency. They can use it, but it can be locked, so it would just be open if it's an emergency. So also, the height of this space is eighteen feet tall. So um there's a lot of noise pollution we can use in this space. You know, acoustical walls, panels, ceiling, if that's a concern, that could be you know, a something that we can explore to add to the space. It can have a noise or sound study to see what the actually sound could be in there. We have done it in a different building, so so apologize for that. Okay, I was pointing out the older tenant. Uh I I think there was a concern on that as well. That is the private gym right now that is by the same owner, so in they will have a problem having the venue next door, obviously. Same with the floor, all the the suite above this space is specky. So it is open, doesn't have any tenants right now, so also doesn't have any worries in there for that tenant. Um it does have a private restroom, just to clarify that. Egress, um as far as code, um these um this base just need to add its door, and you can see it have already one, two, three, four, five to the exterior, so we could even secure, we don't need to have even an emergency hardware to the one that goes to the hallway, so yeah, that's just speaking on what I haven't heard and the concern about the residents in there. I also know that the elevator and the stairs and the levels that are residential have a locked door, a fog, a special uh fog that you used to use, that you need to have to access those levels. I know because when we were doing the side visit seeing all the mechanicals and plumbing uh needs, we went upstairs and we couldn't go to those, to those um levels, so yeah, it 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 and just again, to not to speak on the owner, just to clarify kind of the division that they have for the spaces is definitely meeting, leaning to the more corporate. Let me see if I can. I don't think this is working. Oh, is it? It's so right on the my left side, right, that whole, that middle opening is where where I mentioned they have that um media stream. Um, stream to to display corporate events. Um, you know, confidence and stuff, um, media in there. Um, there's a vestibule as well in the entry, which that it's. You know, you want at least to open those doors that goes to the exterior, they're more more meant to be just. Visual attractive than be open on the time and also to to meet egress, that's what we added in there. As I as as mentioned, they just need two, so two of them could be a remote, just have one. You know, I don't, I don't see why they will open that in every event. It's supposed to be just for egress. So the vestibule. You you won't have a straight doors coming out of to the street, so that also will help with. Um, sound. And I I think, I think that's about, I can recall some of the concerns. So if you have any other question than that.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thoughts?
I guess I have one more question. Um, Mister Edmart. If they just really want to use this for corporate meetings, do you have to have the dance hall permit use?
Yeah, for the variety of events she was talking about, it's it falls under that same ad use designation.
So I've been thinking that. It's weird that the owner's not here to speak for their vision of this. And I really like Commissioner Gonzalez's suggestion that. It would be nice to test the sound capabilities. Before going to the expense of moving forward on this and seeing if they could even comply. Um, I just feel like there's so many things that this would need. It would need somebody to regulate that the people who are parking in the parking garage are actually parking in the correct spaces that were allotted to them. Cause they might put signs on them that say for the venue only, but people could park anywhere. They'll need security, it sounds like almost at any time because of that access that could be open or closed. Um. I know there's the opportunity for us to revoke a conditional use permit. We we've recently done it when the dance hall didn't meet the. Specifications, but I do hate walking into something with so many red flags. Right up front, like we haven't even seen it in action and we are, I'm having a hard time believing that the sound won't travel. And so I I'm leaning towards saying, if somebody came back to me, if I were to continue this, came back to me with a sound study. Came back to me with details that could prove or deny my thought that it wouldn't. It wouldn't be possible, then we could be looking at exactly what we're looking at. We could. Review an event space instead of the dance hall and we could move forward with conditions for that. But I feel like right now we're kind of. Shooting in the dark. The people that live there bought their homes when this was a permitted use, so we're not actually. Giving them a privilege that they didn't already have these the commercial spaces. But it also might not be compatible, so. That's just a lot of thoughts about, I I kind of am leaning towards asking for it to be continued. So that we have the opportunity to address the feasibility of the sound. And then we can modify what we're actually addressing here. That would be, that's what I'm leaning towards.
I'll I'll give it a couple of thoughts, I guess. Um. Oh, one I wanna know, there was a community member that had their hands up, they they can see the. Planning staff and maybe raise an issue. Unfortunately, we can't take any other public comment, um, cause we closed that. Um. I think the, I I wanna be clear, like, I don't. I'm not opposed to dance halls in the D T one, D T two zone. They absolutely, they're they're permitted uses there. Um. I'm not feeling it's right for this particular property. Um, and it's based on. The uses of the property and for me, I would be inclined to vote no. Based on. Uh, that that I feel it unreasonably interferes with the lawful use of surrounding property. If there were other factors or evidence that kind of suggests it would be more compatible with the um, the uses there. Uh, I'd I'd be inclined to allow it. Um, and then the other one, the other part, um. If the proposed use will in the other way be detrimental to the health, safety. And this is the provision I do it under general welfare of persons residing in the vicinity or injurious to the property in the vicinity. Uh. When when I look at forty two hundred square feet, I think, okay, that's a large house, very large house. And then I think five hundred forty people in there. That's uh, that's tight. And so I have some issues with the. You know, I I guess there's five, four toilets in the women's and. Two urinals and two toilets in the men's and there's five hundred and forty people. And uh. And then the noise. Um, now if these upper floors, these floors five and six were different uses. Um. I'd feel, I might, I'd probably feel different if I knew that there was a sound study or soundproofing that that efforts to mitigate it. I'd feel different. Uh, but at this point with applicant moving forward with the dance hall permitted use, I'm inclined to vote no.
So you, your suggestion about having a sound study, you've sort of moved beyond that because you just. It's not, you don't even need to go that far. You already think it's not acceptable.
Uh, if there was a sound study, if there was like test us, tests, testing done in a in a level. You know, five, level six, and they were to test it. Um, I think we'd be obligated to kind of approve it, cause it meets the. The code. Um, but as it stands right now, like I don't. Um, there's not evidence, there's not objective evidence pointing out that it's.
Okay.
It's gonna meet that.
Yeah, and just something quick, just for clarification. I know there's a lot of people here and I I like to make sure that this is important. This is not. A legislative action, so we are not given a ton of leeway, and so we do have to have findings. Um, specific findings within the code to say that we don't think it's going to be able to meet it in order. To deny it. So just so you guys are oriented on the types of conversations that we're having here. We can't just say, I don't like it. We have to have findings of fact to back that up. Um, here, just like Commissioner Gonzalez just did.
Yeah, so like, I would be concerned about the noise, I'd be con- concerned about the the plumbing facilities, the. The sewer facility, I'd be concerned about, um, well, those would probably be the two primary ones. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the important part is that it would interfere with the lawful use of surrounding properties, including residents that live there, right? And their health and wellbeing kind of thing, which are criteria we can use.
Yeah, but to be clear, like, uh, um, in a different property, um, I. In in the D T one, D T two zone, like absolutely, I'd support it. Uh, yeah.
You have a comment?
I I just feel like doing a sound study would be good, except that we already have evidence that they had such a use. And they even had to call the police to say, okay, this is too much. And um, there is something to be said for those steel beams. And for vibration and sound being carried in a different way than in other buildings. Um, I work in a building that's like that and it's like you're hearing somebody next to you. That's actually quite a distance away because it carries through those beams in a different way. So. We can do the study, but I don't think it's gonna pass. I don't think it's gonna work, in my opinion.
I still would like also some objective evidence and I have no shade on the residents. I'm sure it was bothersome. I'm sure you were right, but we need to have. Numbers reported, if that makes sense. Um, so I would also prefer to have it be objective evidence. And I also wonder, um, the architect said they could do this, they could do that. I wonder. Um, i- if we did continue it, if they could come back with a, like a better idea of what could be done. To mitigate it, even if, I don't know that we have the leeway to like require them to, I don't know, but um, I'd. I'd like that information.
I mean, it seems like they just have to meet the standard and however they do that, if it's using. You know, acoustic foam, if it's using whatever, if it's padding the steel girders, they have to meet that. Like, they're not gonna operate if the noise is over a certain level. Police are gonna get called and it's gonna get shut down.
With that, I I actually am wondering if a condition we could add would be that. Before a certificate of occupancy is granted, that that sound study with positive results that it meets code would have to be shown, right? Like, we're not gonna wait for them to call the police. We're just gonna say right off, you gotta show that you're meeting this, kind of thing. We're not changing the code, we're just gonna say, you gotta prove you're doing it.
Yeah, I would support something like that.
I would also.
Can I add? I also think it's strange that the owners, it seems like a significant step. I I would actually be in support of continuing it because I get no, although our designer did a nice job in answering many of our questions. It's different than if the owner's here, we can look him in the eye and kind of understand what are you trying to accomplish. Um, so I would be in favor of continuing it. With the owner knowing what we've talked about tonight and bringing back some more, wait, 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 maybe you got the wrong idea. Help us understand what is the right idea and then, but I would also be in support of your condition that. If if we can't get the testing done now and get that objective measurement, could we make it a condition? As part of the building permit and some of the other things that they demonstrate.
Be shown, yeah.
Yeah, I guess part of the problem is that it's event hall slash dance hall conditional use and it seems like one of those is a lot scarier than the other. An event, a corporate event hall is kind of, I mean, it's two hundred people showing up during the day. Some quiet, maybe loud announcements being made and uh, and then everyone goes home. But yeah, a nightclub is a different thing and. It sounds like approving one is approving the other.
That's right.
And they would have all these noise requirements, they have the security requirements, they have to make code and all that, but yeah, it it does. Lead to potential issues, I think.
So I I don't think we can do anything about this one, obviously, but I I wonder if this is something that we could also recommend for future that. Um, staff and city council look into separating those, cause that is very different. A very different effect upon the community around. And I think that that's fair to ask that we make the distinction.
Well, on top of that, I think, you know, it is a mixed use zone with mixed use buildings, but not every building is mixed use. And I tend to think maybe corporate conferences sure could be in a mixed use building, especially when there's offices, that's kind of nice. Um, but maybe dance halls should be in buildings that don't have residency, right? Like, they can be in the neighborhood. But a little more buffer.
Well, what about the the idea of it being a venue for weddings still means you could have a loud, raucous crowd?
Yep.
And the decibels could still be high, so separating the uses isn't gonna solve that problem a hundred percent. Use can have corporate events that are wild and crazy, so. If they had to satisfy a more strict requirement to have the venue for events. They'd have to either go for the the dance hall, knowing that's the sound level they need. Or keep the sound down if they're in the event.
Yeah, I think when you're talking about separating uses, it's more of, is this a conference level of noise versus a dance hall level of noise? Right? And so you could just say, hey, if you can meet meet these more restrictive hours of operation and sound levels. Then it's an easier process, right?
If if the applicant decided to not ever use this as a dance hall. Would they have to bring back a different application for a different conditional use permit for one of those other ones, or does this still cover that?
The way the code's currently written, uh, it's it's one of the same.
So we're just calling it a dance hall on here, but that's not really what it has to be.
Yeah, it it, yeah, it's.
It's all inclusive.
All of the above.
Okay, I just, the more I listen, the more I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez, again, he's changed my mind, that. It just doesn't seem suited and I hate to set, to give the nod to something that seems set up to not work.
So I'm seeing.
The steel beams make any amount of of insulation seem unlikely to help a lot.
So I'm seeing kind of three paths forward. I think we all share the noise concern is the primary concern. There's already provisions in the code about security to address that one. Um, and I think some building management things can help make sure the residents are protected, et cetera, but it's the noise one, right? Um, am I right there? And I I think I'm seeing three paths that we're talking about. We could either say, we don't think it's gonna work. We have these findings of facts. Um, that it doesn't meet the conditions. Um, and so we're not going to grant it. We could continue it and give them a chance to. Prove our concerns wrong, right? Or we can just say, hey, here's our concerns, and as long as you prove that you can do it. Before you occupy it, then we're we're gonna allow staff to take care of that, right? Um, so where are we leaning among those three options or is there a fourth?
I thought I just had um, about the con- the continuation, though I was leaning away from continuation, it does give them the opportunity to recognize it's not gonna work. And to come back with a different proposal. Under the same application and say, oh, well, we still need the conditional use permit, but we're not gonna use it as a dance hall like the architect was suggesting, that maybe the owner would feel that way. But we don't know, cause the owner's not here.
Right.
I I do wanna bring like one clarification. I don't, um. I don't feel comfortable making any rulings or decisions or finding as findings of fact based on vibrations. Cause I don't know if it's regulated in the code and the ordinances, un- unfortunately. Um. But yeah, that that's just a general comment. Yeah.
But sound, yes.
Sound, yes, yeah, absolutely.
And I I did double check the fifty five decibel thing. It's described as a quiet conversation, the hum of a refrigerator, not a noisy dishwasher. Which are different appliances in my mind.
Yes.
I can sleep through one, I don't know.
So you can hear it, but it's not loud.
Yeah.
Kind of thing. And this is an interesting thing, because I've lived in downtown urban areas in big cities and. Yes, there is a higher tolerance of sound that you're expected to have, but daytime sound is different than night sound. And sound within your building is different than sound coming from the street, right? I think. And so there's an interesting balance that we have to wrestle with here on it.
And I I agree with you. That's why I would lean towards continuing, because that gives the owner a chance to come back and say, totally understand, like, I mean. Po- possible solution or what they would do is come back whenever they come back. Totally understand your concerns, let me tell you how this is gonna work, or we've, we're proceeding with this, please do put a condition. So that we can be better neighbors, right? We have a a neighbor problem in the building, it sounds like right now.
I mean, I think I like the idea of.
Decision that makes that worse right now.
And then we can make a decision in the future with more information, more data to. Either say, yes, go forward. I think I still would put in that condition of you gotta prove you met it, kind of thing. Um, before you occupy it, but then, or say, it looks like it's not gonna work, right? It still gives us those options. How do we feel about continuing it?
Yeah, and I would just, I would hope that they can find a way to make it work, cause if we can't make a nightclub work or a dance hall or whatever. Work at a hundred East and Center Street, right? Like, where else is it gonna work in our downtown? I would hope we can find a way to make uses compatible with each other in a healthy downtown.
Yeah, and I think there are ways. They just have to explore them and show that it can work here.
Yeah.
Or not.
Or not, which, you know, anyone that started business knows, you wanna find this out soon, right? Not later in the process.
I also.
Not when the police get called after.
Feel like with a conditional use permit, it's, I know it's not a variance, but when we, I feel like it's it's good to put the um. Responsibility for showing that it's compatible on the applicant. And without the owner here to speak for their intentions and what they're willing to do. I feel like we can't put any responsibility on them.
Okay, so Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, if we continue, we need a time period and what we're looking for. Is that correct?
Um, continuing it certainly under your jurisdiction, yes, as clear as you can be in your motion is what to, as to what you want the owner to come back and present. That's very helpful. It doesn't have to be to a date certain, you can leave it open and the applicant can bring it back when he's ready to bring it back.
Great.
I think the things we would ask for is that there's not enough information about the potential. For.
Sound pollution?
Sound proofing, like, we need information that gives us. An understanding or confidence that it's soundproofing is realistic, because that's where I'm leaning towards. It's not realistic and so.
But I don't think we should use the word soundproofing.
No.
We should use sound mitigation or something.
Dampening.
What about decibel readings of property lines?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what, that's the way.
We want some more data. We can't, yeah, soundproofing.
And I would like that with doors open and closed, because I think that's a very good point, that every time somebody walks in and out of the building. Even especially, I know there's the vestibule on the plans, but there are also four other egress points that they could walk in and out of, so.
Although for me, a a solution would be to say those will never be used.
Except for fire.
Except for fire.
Okay.
In which case, noise isn't our biggest problem. Um, and then, but yes, in that sound study, I would like to see people passing through that vestibule. Just to make sure. Um, and then, but yes, in that sound study, I would like to see people passing through that vestibule, just to make sure it really does block the sound, right? We don't get big spikes.
I would like to know how they plan to regulate the occupancy limits if they were, um, because that would be a condition is the occupancy limits, and I don't, I would like to know how someone's gonna count heads, how somebody's going to manage the parking. Um, and what security plans they would propose for the times when they needed it. I would also like more details on the, I have a hard time believing that there would be a dance club that didn't serve some sort of food or beverage. And this floor plan doesn't really make that possible, so I would like some realistic explanation of, of what that vision is as well. I just feel like there's not enough details to make a decision with good information.
Any other thoughts before we turn that into a motion?
I hope somebody wrote that down, cuz that was wordy.
Yeah, you have all four things, I remember there's four things.
Four things, so I got three things. No. Decibel reading in property lines with doors open and closed, how to plan um, to regulate occupancy limits, so counting people, how to manage parking and security plans when, um, I don't know what this word I've written is, um, when needed. Okay, and then food and beverage plan.
Is that reasonable?
Basically, you're saying food service versus food preparation, you'd like to know what the plan is, how it's gonna be done.
Just. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
And particularly alcohol, I'd like to know as well.
I think what we want is we want the owner to help us understand. I mean, the architect or some engineer might do these studies, but we want the owner standing here, helping us understand these metrics and these goals and.
Yeah, that's part of why I'm inclined to just say no without having that information.
Cuz they didn't even.
But, but, but if someone wants to put forth a motion to continue, I think we should go ahead and some, put the forth the motion and have a vote on it.
Okay, Harvey, do you wanna do it since you wrote it down?
Okay.
I know you love this.
Yeah, this is my least favorite. Okay, um, I move that we continue item one, Claudia Estaba. I request a conditional use permit for a dance hall for space within an existing building in DT two zone located eighty-sixteen North University Avenue, Suite one-ten, with the conditions that, uh, or the request that they come, the owner come back and talk to us about, um, his plan for this, including um, doing some sound testing of decibel readings at property lines with the doors open and closed. Um, how to plan to regulate the occupancy and count, how you're gonna count people and manage that, how you're gonna manage parking and make sure everybody's parking in the correct spaces. Um, security plans for when security is needed, so two hundred plus people. Um, and what the food and beverage plan is, whether it's food service versus food prep. We wanna know more about that, and then anything about if there are any plans to have alcohol on premises.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion before we vote?
I would just like to, um, thank the residents for coming and telling us how you feel. You've given us lots of good information. And also, I know it's frustrating when you come and then we say, we'd like to continue this, so if the vote to continue passes, I want you to know that the testimonies that you gave tonight will still, like, we, every one of us is here, so if and when we hear this again, we will still have that information. Um, and I, I just felt like that was important to make sure people know they don't have to give up another night of their life if it's not possible. We heard you.
Although you are also welcome to, if you'd like to come hear what they have to say and, and tell us how you feel. Okay, let's go ahead and vote, starting with Matthew.
Aye. Me.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the motion to continue passes six to one on this one, okay? So with that, we will go to item number two. Alan and Joanna Ludlow request an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code fourteen dot thirty dot twenty to add a property to, in the R one-ten, one-family residential zone to areas permitting ADUs located at eighteen forty-one North, fifteen fifty East. And Jessica Daniki is going to present that for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Um, yes, as mentioned, this is for an ADU, the property eighteen forty-one North, fifteen fifty East. You can see it outlined on the map here. Uh, the property is zoned R one-ten and does not currently allow for accessory dwelling units. Uh, a complaint was raised against this property, which led to enforcement action. Um, the property owner, our enforcement staff has been informed by the property owner that they are in the process of reducing occupancy. It's my understanding that one of the two tenants has already moved out and the second one has a move-out date. Um, and then Code seventeen oh-three one hundred allows us to continue with our application process, um, because it is a pathway to compliance for the property owner. Um, ADUs in the process for establishing ADUs in zones that don't allow them, have a lot of confusion around them, so I wanted to include a slide to allow some, some clarity for this. Um, so fourteen thirty oh-four oh, excuse me, orfo, oh-four oh, has a special use permit. Um, there is a longstanding history with that title. But what it is, is the same thing as an ordinance text amendment, it has additional qualifications with it. So the difference is that as part of this, they're to obtain, obtain support from surrounding neighbors. Uh, a standard ordinance text amendment, all you need to upload for the application is the reason and justification for the amendment, and then a draft for the proposed amendment. Uh, I do wanna make it clear for those here that, that having a completed application that makes it to the public hearing process uh, is not a guarantee of approval, that the final approval comes with city council with a vote at a public meeting. Uh, when this application was submitted, the applicant obtained signatures from sixty-six percent of the surrounding neighbors. Uh, since that time, staff has been contacted and some of these neighbors have asked to withdraw their support. So while they aren't qualifying for the special use permit, the process of an ordinance text amendment, they still meet the qualifications for this to move forward. Um, it is still just an ordinance text amendment to amend where accessory apartments are allowed. Um, so as mentioned, this ordinance text amendment is to amend where accessory apartments are allowed, and it will only include the property at eighteen forty-one North, fifteen fifty East. Um, you can see on the map that is provided, the teeny tiny little red square. That's a rough approximation of the house that will be added to this map if the ordinance is adopted. Uh, if this ordinance is adopted, it does not automatically approve or guarantee that an ADU can be established at the pro- at the property. The property owner then has to obtain a rental dwelling license and show how they meet all the standards of fourteen thirty. Um, but this ordinance text amendment does allow any future owner the opportunity to apply to have an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, they wouldn't have to go through the text amendment again, they would just have to prove that they meet the requirements of fourteen thirty. Um, even though this has changed from a special use permit, which was the original application with the signatures of the sixty-six percent surrounding neighbors to just a standard ordinance text amendment, uh, staff's recommendation to recommend approval um, is still what the, consistent with staff's current recommendation because accessory dwelling units are listed as a tool from, in the general plan to help provide uh, for housing needs, and this application does still meet the goals and policies of the general plan. Now, with that being said, since the staff report has been published, um, staff have received calls from over ten neighbors who have stated being opposed at the ADU. Um, we've also received one call just asking for clarification about where the ADU would be located at the property. And we've had multiple people come in and speak to us at the counter. Um, any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions for staff?
Um, is it going to be a detached structure? It's just in the basement, right?
Correct, and, uh, the applicant is here and has some slides as part of her presentation. She'll show you where the ADU will be located.
I have a question. So when you showed the, um, special permit versus ordinance text amendment, remind me which one we're talking about? It's the ordinance text amendment, right?
So, the applicant submitted under the, the premise that she would have the sixty-six percent approval because she submitted with the surrounding signatures. Um, the outcome and even the application title in our program is the same, it's ordinance text amendment.
Right, cuz it used to be, that was the administrative way, but now it's still going through city council now, like the ordinance amendment, okay?
When it changed with the code, they never actually changed the title, so it, it has led to some confusion.
Yeah, talking about it's even confusing me, so I don't blame people.
But it still has to go to the city council.
It will still go to the city council for a final vote, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and invite the applicant forth. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. We'll ask questions at the end.
See if I can use this here. All right, um, let's see for slides. Here we go. All right, thank you, Jessica, for clarifying that. I'm so grateful. She's been so helpful through this process. It has been confusing. But we're really grateful for her help and, uh, really appreciate all of you are here today and for your time. Um, so I'm Joanna Ludlow. I'm the owner of eighteen forty-one North, fifteen fifty East. Um, and, um, you know, we bought this home um, as part of our version of the American dream, a home that'll meet our family's needs through many phases of life. And that's why we bought this home specifically. Uh, we wanna live here in Provo indefinitely. Um, we did not buy this home to be landlords, that was not our purpose. Um, we're looking for a home that could grow with us through the years, so we have five children. Um, it's gonna be their forever home and one of them's gonna inherit it. We're not planning on leaving. Um, so we love this city, we wanna be an asset and contribute in meaningful ways, so, um. So, uh, about twenty-five years ago, we lived in this neighborhood, um, in an apartment. And, um, we were going to BYU and we wanted to end up in this neighborhood. Uh, many of our friends that lived, um, there were in basement apartments, provided, you know, wonderful diversity to the neighborhood. Um, it was a predominantly older neighborhood. Um, and there's, really, there's always been apartments in this neighborhood, uh, for decades. Um, so approving our ADU would not change how the neighborhood has been for many years. Um, there won't be more traffic or overcrowding, it'll stay pretty much the same. Um, so the difference is that we're going through the proper channels to do it, abiding by city code and getting the necessary approval, uh, so that we can be a model of what should be done. So that's why we're here, going through this today. Um, with the impending teardown of why not, it does provide a solution for, uh, you know, BYU families who, uh, will not have anywhere to go. And so, um, just as far as the general plan, um, let's see here. So, uh, for this home specifically, there have been some concerns. We've poured years, years of work into it. It's increased the property value, which contributes to the improved, uh, property values of the whole neighborhood. Um, our neighbors have seen us tirelessly improving our, our property, um, for, so we can, we can enjoy it ourselves. We haven't, um, added the apartment, it was already there. Um, it wasn't ISAR, it was sitting there vacant for about a year before we bought it because it needed a lot of work. We did not add the living space within our home, the separate living space for the apartment, it was part of the nineteen sixty-seven blueprint. Um, so, uh, like I said, we will plan on staying here indefinitely. It will be owner-occupied that entire time. I know that's a concern. It will never be a duplex. Uh, we are gonna be living there ourselves. Um, and we, we started here about nine years ago, we started our physical therapy clinic. Um, you know, we wanna be an asset to our neighbors and to our community. We've served thousands locally, provided hundreds of thousands of dollars in pro bono services every year that we've been here. Um, for those in need, uh, we're not going anywhere, you know, we're gonna stay, stay here in Provo. Um, so we do have a proven track record. Um, we moved here in two thousand fifteen from Texas. We bought a home in need of desperate help right by the BYU stadium. And that house was in disrepair, the yard was awful, the neighbors put up hedges just to keep the dandelions out of their yard, it was real bad. We put in, you know, a nice white vinyl fence, mowed, weeded, you know, just maintained it really nicely, became uh, what we call a gateway to the neighborhood, so a positive part of the neighborhood improved all the property values there. Um, we started our business, uh, found out we were expecting, uh, unexpectedly, our fifth child, surprise, surprise. So, um, we went through the proper channels to establish a legal accessory apartment, uh, to help us get through those meager years. Um, uh, we followed every requirement, we put in like a two-inch stair on our porch and, um, GFCI outlets, handrails, we did everything according to, uh, what was necessary there. It was lived in full-time as an owner-occupant, um, we only rented temporarily. It, you know, kept us afloat when we started our business. Um, it was the only thing that saved our home and business during COVID, we can attest that. Um, we provided affordable rent to BYU students, you know, newlyweds. Uh, we screened for responsible tenants, uh, we had really strong neighbor ties in that neighborhood. So this is the home that is, um, we're requesting the ADU for, and these are original blueprints of the lower level. And you can see the apartment there in blue. Uh, it has a well-designed lower-level space, is a separate living space originally. Um, about, it's about eighteen hundred square feet for this apartment, so it's a large, spacious, comfortable apartment. Um, and we bought it cuz we knew we would wanna have a space for our parents. Um, the kitchen, um, which is kind of in the middle, it's labeled kitchen there, if you can see it, uh, was part of those original blueprints. Um, ample space, so there's no overcrowding, we're not packing a bunch of people in there, just our family and under three unrelated adults as per code. Um, in this apartment, I thought it'd be great to have some, um, inside pictures, you can have a feel for it. It has a spacious living room, second from the left. Uh, four bedrooms, so great, you know, have an extra office in there or something. Large double vanity bathroom, separate shower, uh, full-size kitchen, full-size laundry room, the size of a bedroom, second from the left there. Um, sorry, I got my, my right and left there mixed up. And we can provide affordable rent for those that work here in Provo, um, you know, in a responsible, um, you know, well-cared-for space. So I know that that's, you know, not always the case with a lot of apartments that are put in, they're not well-cared-for, they're kinda cobbled together. Uh, there's a lot of homes that are, you know, not, uh, they weren't designed to be apartments in the first place, but this was, so. All right, here we go. It does maintain the single-family look, this is the entrance in the back, the back of the home. Um, that is in compliance with the code, that it have the, um, the one-front entrance. Okay, and here are, um, here's the blueprints of the front yard, and these are two-scale, and these are obviously way more cars than we would park there, but it does exceed their required four spaces. Um, it has a four-car garage, large driveway. Uh, the family that lived here before we did had eighteen children, so I can say we have a lot fewer cars out there than they had. Um, and in fact, a lot of the, a lot of the homes in the neighborhood did used to have a lot of children who have now all grown up and moved away. And so the demographics of the neighborhood change all the time, you know? What used to be, you know, a seven or eight family household is now one or two individuals. Um, and so it does change naturally like that. Okay, I'm gonna show you some pictures here of the parking, just you can be sure, so this is the north side of our home, there's the garage entrance there, and then the driveway. Here is the south side of the home, um, plenty of, plenty of parking for off-street parking. Uh, we keep it quiet, clean, respectful, uh, extra upkeep. Um, we pay for extra trash cans, we've worked to remedy a disastrous yard with many fire hazards. To a tidy yard, there was a dead tree over on the left that we took out, so we've really tried to clean it up and make it safer too. Um, there's a traffic concern, and so I just wanna touch on that briefly. Uh, the impact on traffic in the neighborhood is minimal from our one home. Uh, and the reality is, you know, the demographics change constantly, like we, like I mentioned before. Um, and that doesn't have anything to do with just our one home. Uh, we have, uh, oh, this is us, we actually lived in the apartment when our home was being remodeled. So this is one of the great benefits we enjoyed here, and it's, you know, very comfortable for our family. It shows all the different things when we, um, did the remodel. We adhered to all the codes that, um, that we've checked those all off. So we've already addressed a lot of those there. Um, we've added a lot of, a lot of important things like fire doors, there were absolutely no smoke detectors or carbon monoxide detectors in the entire home. Um, we had the gas company come and check all the, um, the fireplaces and, you know, the gas dryer, and we just had everything looked over really carefully. So we do adhere to all the, the code requirements. Um, we've had great community support. Um, there's over thirty-three residents here within just a few blocks that sign in support, many are here tonight. Um, I'm sorry, you can't read that, it's kinda small, I'll just summarize real quick. It says, "We're reaching out as your neighbors at eighteen forty-one North, fifteen fifty East to ask for your support as we work with the city to officially approve the basement apartment in our home. We keep our property clean and safe, continually improving it to help raise neighborhood home values. We're committed to being respectful neighbors, no street parking, no trash buildup and quiet living." Um, and there's a few other things that I've already addressed here about, you know, keeping up the property, um, so the details are there. Uh, we also receive the required signatures of direct neighbors, and there's been a lot of confusion over what this will, um, happen in our neighborhood as far as, you know, a blanket zoning that will change the whole neighborhood and allow for apartments everywhere, um, which we don't believe is the case from what Jessica presented earlier. Um, and so there's been a lot of confusion there. Um, so we have had a few neighbors resend their signature, and we have, I have actually spoken to them, and we have obtained more signatures. Um, and so there's been a lot of confusion there. Um, so we have had a few neighbors resend their signature, and we have, I have actually spoken to them, and we have obtained more signatures. So I think we're actually in the clear. Um, so we are requesting this ADU. Uh, this home was bought primarily for space for our family. Uh, for our kids during school, housing transitions, marriage, you know, some of you probably have older kids and know what that's like as they're moving in and out sometimes and need, need help. Um, they're for our aging parents, which are here on the right. These are my folks here. And, um, we want them to have a space where they can live, uh, with dignity and privacy inside of our home, where we can care for them directly. Um, and this home will nearly always be used just for our family. So it's a temporary request, um, like a temporary bridge. Short-term responsible rental only until interest rates improve and, um, and then our grown kids will use it. Our oldest is nineteen. We're hoping it can help cover the cost of his mission. He's leaving here in a couple of months. Um, so this is not an investment property. It began as and will ninety-nine percent of the time be used just for us and our family. Um, we do have a second kitchen, which we're really grateful to have. We'd really like to keep our second kitchen for our family. And so this one, the reasons we're coming before you today as well. Um, so we're seeking this amendment, uh, to the zoning map, uh, for the rental dwelling license. It's a narrow case-by-case allowance, um, adding our home to the map only. Just to clarify, um, from what I understand, it's not setting any precedence for more rentals in the neighborhood. It's not a blanket zoning change, just our one home. Meets every code requirement backed by many neighbors built for our family's future care. And, uh, we felt it's a model example of a responsible ADU in line with Provo's strong desire, uh, for good communities. So. Um, thank you for your time, for your service, for all that you guys do, and, you know, of course, sitting here through these meetings. Um, we love Provo. We want to adhere to the guidelines for the ADU and want to keep Provo, Provo neighborhoods and the community strong. So we very much want to do what we can to do that. Um, so, uh, did you guys have questions or?
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, please.
Just to clarify something you just said, I think I heard the term short-term rental, but that means something very different than I think you mean it. When you said like a short-term rental capacity, you mean like for the next couple of years and then it's family, not Airbnb?
Yes, not Airbnb.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Possibly rent it out for maybe one more year, maybe less. We're actually trying to refinance right now. We have excessively high interest rate when we bought, um, in twenty-three. But then it would just be used for family.
Okay.
We would still be there the whole time, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We'll now open the meeting to public comment. Um, before we do, let me go ahead and read in the letters that we've received on this one. So we have received letters from Bailey Wood. Someone check me, make sure I don't miss any. Sarah Ashby. Um, and that one is signed by a long list of individuals. Then we have Ryan Romanahook. I think that's how you say that. Roman Hook. Okay, thank you. Uh, Christina Parkinson, Kara Stowers. Um, a second one from Kara Stowers, Sally Clayton, Sarah Ashby. And that finishes it up. Any I missed there? Good. Okay, so with that, um, are there any neighborhood or district chairs present at tonight? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move it to the general public. Each of you will have two minutes to make a comment. Um, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding and your microphone will be muted, and please limit it to one comment per person. If you have questions, we'll call you back up at the end. You also don't need to wait for me to call on you. Go ahead and just come and start to sit, make a line in the front row. Um, so that we can get through everybody that would like to speak.
Okay, so my name's Sarah Ashby. We live in Provo. We live just one street over from the proposal. We moved to our current home in Oak Hills fifteen years ago with a six-year-old, a two-year-old, and expecting a third boy. We wanted to raise our kids where they could bike, run, skateboard, play with friends, throw a frisbee in the street, and walk to their friend's house safely on their own. We specifically sought out and bought a house in a neighborhood zoned for decades for single-family homes, and that did not allow ADUs. We wanted to live on a street that wasn't crowded with cars, a street where it's the neighbors who live there and who know our kids as they're driving down the road because they're more likely to be careful. This came true. Our boys spent most of their young lives outside, often on or near the street, especially as our neighborhood does not have sidewalks. They are now teenagers and their favorite hobbies are biking and skateboarding, and they're still in the street. I want to maintain the things we love about where we live, which means no ADUs. They increase the number of cars and drivers on the road, which affects every single neighbor, not just those with houses around the ADU. ADUs increase the value of the property they are attached to, and they decrease the value of the houses around them. I'm concerned about a legal ADU in a home with this many bedrooms. A large amount of money can be made, uh, by renting as many rooms as possible. We have several homes in our neighborhood that currently violate city code by renting to too many people. Neighbors have asked the city to investigate, but most of the violations continue. I think it's unlikely we could get the city to enforce the code if there was a violation. I'm really concerned that some neighbors who supported the current application were misled by the applicant. And don't understand that the right to have a legal ADU stays with the house forever, even with a change in ownership. We were also told by the applicant that the city would come in and rip out all the second kitchens, kitchens in our homes without a legal ADU, which is not true. I would like the city to give out correct information so neighbors can make.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sally Clayton. I'm also a resident of the Provo Oak Hills neighborhood where I'm raising my family with two small girls. And I really strongly believe that these ADU exceptions are pretty problematic. I also believe in building a strong Provo, and I know that there's a reason why we have select neighborhoods that don't permit ADUs. I think it's really important that Provo has optionality and where people can live, and that there's options for people who do want to live in permanent, well-established neighborhoods that don't have ADUs. I know that housing is actually a huge problem in Provo, and I know that there's a bit of a crisis happening, and so I do believe in affordable housing for students. I don't think ADU exceptions and established neighborhoods are the answer. I think that the process for applying for these ADUs is pretty problematic. I think you're gonna hear that tonight and even saw that in the paperwork. There's a lot of sort of pressure to, you know, support neighbors who we do love and want to support. Um, and it creates a really sort of awkward tension among the neighborhood. I think that this application does have some, um, problems as well. You know, it's in a home that currently was in violation, um, of renters without permission. It has signatures of people who actually don't own homes in Oak Hills on it as well. Um, and so I just think the whole process for this sort of ADU is broken, and I think we should not be offering these ADU exceptions, especially in a neighborhood like ours, which we're all very dedicated to being in a permanent neighborhood that does sort of encourage a single-family residences predominantly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, McKay Jones, I've been here in Provo. I just wanted to speak in favor of it. You know, a lot of people talk about the housing crisis, but the solution seems to be, let's have affordable units, but not in my neighborhood, in someone else's neighborhood. And I think that we need to, I, we need to make housing available in all of our neighborhoods. You know, it would be a benefit of community to have these people and renters in our neighborhood, you know, their, their students, their professionals. Um, as the Ludlos already mentioned, they have ample parking. There's minimal impact to the neighborhood. The apartment as it exists is already in place. It was built originally with the house. Um, they're responsible homeowners. They're not gonna, you know, rent to people, you know, that would be a detriment to the neighborhood, that would race their cars up and down the street. Um, and I think that at this time of high interest rates and lack of affordable housing, that this is essential, that, that all neighborhoods do their part to, to make housing more affordable. So I believe in conclusion, this request is reasonable, beneficial to the community, and consistent with local planning goals. I respectfully urge you to approve the variance and allow the basement apartment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Santiago, um, the Oak Hills neighborhood. I've been contacted by several neighbors to, um, come and share my thoughts as well. I, I feel like the single-family neighborhoods are, uh, becoming extinct in Provo. Sixty percent, I believe, of the, of the, um, units in Provo already allow ADUs. And I don't think that every single neighborhood needs to allow ADUs. We bought this neighborhood as a single-family neighborhood. Or we bought into this neighborhood as a single-family neighborhood. I've watched, as a council member, prior council member, I watched the Slate Canyon neighborhood um, be literally torn apart by overoccupied rentals. I've watched the tree streets and been involved in, in that neighborhood being completely fractured by some of the over occupancy that's happened there. And the reason why you're hearing about this is the same problem that happened in those neighborhoods. It's the cars. It's the noise. It, it's what keeps people from having the quiet enjoyment of their property. That's why the city hears about it, and that's why you've heard about this. And it's not a, a right of every homeowner to change the, the ordinance in their neighborhood, and it's not the neighborhood's responsibility to help a person afford their home or help a person make money on their home. We bought into this neighborhood for a reason. We like the quiet enjoyment of a single-family neighborhood. And I hope that you'll protect that and hope you'll forward a po, a negative recommendation to the council to, um, not make a change, not make a text amendment. And I'm grateful that they didn't get the signatures for this because it does change the nature of the neighborhood. It absolutely does, and it doesn't just affect this one home, and I wish that that was not the information that they were given, is that this is just gonna affect one home. It affects the entire neighborhood, not just the continuous, the contiguous properties, and I hope you'll consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Taylor, I'd just like to say that I love the Ludlos. I'm happy they're in our neighborhood. But they did know the zoning when they moved into the neighborhood. Melissa, you've seen what happens in the neighborhood when the renters come in. I mean, you've experienced the Oak Hills area for your entire lifetime. You grew up in the Oak Hills area and you're, and you chose to live in that neighborhood. I've lived there over thirty years. My wife's parents built a home in the Oak Hills area. My parents lived down on East Center Street. They had a beautiful home, but that neighborhood has been destroyed. I mean, from what it was when the Pardos and other people lived there, uh, Jones, Harold Jones and Fay Jones, I mean, that area is not the same neighborhood now that they allow so many renters in the neighborhood. My great aunt lived on Third West from in between Needers and the, uh, and the Provo River Trail, but that neighborhood's been destroyed. You, you can't even you can hardly drive down Third West because of the parking issues that they have there, and that's supposed to be accessory dwelling units, and it's supposed to be occupied by a, by the resident plus the renter. It's not supposed to be rented upstairs and downstairs to renters, but yet that's what's happening to it. The Watcott's home was not built as a rental unit. Melissa, you know that. You grew up there. The Watcott's had, what, twelve, thirteen children, and then, you know, he's before Brother Watcott died in his nineties, I mean, yeah, the home was, there was a little bit of overgrowth there, but it was built by Dr. Watcott, and he had multiple wives over the years, and their kids would come and rent that property, but it was built as a canon kitchen, not as a rental unit. It's a nice neighborhood. There are people that are opposed to it, turning it, I mean, uh, to, turning it into these accessory dwelling units. Mitzi Collins lives in the neighborhood, and she's on your, on your committee, and she's a pope.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annie Arnick, and I live two doors down from the proposed house. We moved to this neighborhood nine years ago. I had a one-year-old, a three-year-old, four-year-old, and a seven-year-old. And we picked this neighborhood. We came from the Bonneville neighborhood, which is right below the Slate Canyon neighborhood. And we intentionally picked this neighborhood and moved away from that neighborhood. We loved our house and we loved that community, but we did not like the overpopulation, the cars, the traffic, and it wasn't a very safe place, we felt like, for our children. So we picked this Oak Hills neighborhood. We paid a premium in our housing prices. We moved there because we wanted the safe environment for our kids, and it's been a wonderful place. Um, I'm opposed to this ADU, um, permit because I do believe that while it may benefit the Ludlos, it doesn't benefit me, and it doesn't benefit my children, and it doesn't benefit the immediate neighbors.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Mauro. Um, I just wanted to say I'm in favor of the Ludlos project. Um, my main thought with it is I believe that the concern regarding traffic comes from a more fear rather than a found-based, uh, understanding of what the number of trips that the ADU unit will actually generate for the neighborhood. Uh, my understanding, it should be very, very low. So adding an ADU unit shouldn't be a problem for our area. I live four houses down from the Ludlos. I have two little girls. And in the past, I have previously served in a YSA ward where most of our congregation that is in this area belonged to it. And yes, their units were illegal and they were not abiding the code. So my main thought with it would be if that were to be the case, that we are not gonna be allowing ADU units, I think we should start vacating anyone else that is in the area that should be renting, but it shouldn't be just for the, something that we are gonna prevent doing. I believe that the zoning code should change according to the needs of the population, and that's why we're all here sharing our thoughts about it. If you guys will decide if there is a need for it or not, but I believe that, uh, because of current, current interest rates, that that should be allowed for the Ludlos. Uh, currently, right now, they're paying an eight percent interest rate on their property, and I'm sure that they're not planning to keep the ADU used later on. But, uh, these are tough times. Uh, it's easy to say that paying a very low interest rate that you don't need the unit or that anyone gets worried when it affects their pocket. So I firmly support the Ludlos, and me and my wife were outside. Uh, she couldn't come in, but she is in favor of this as well, and I know several other people that could make it today that are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joseph Ballantyne. I also live in the neighborhood. And I'm concerned about the ADU. Because, and, and one reason I have heard people saying that they're gonna build something separate. I looked at the lot that's there. It's one of the smallest lots we have. It's ten feet on one side, twenty feet on the other side, and about twenty feet in the backyard. So, and, and there's also been some, uh, speculation that th- there will be a clinic in that house because the owner, uh, has has well, my, my fin- finest go. I'm, gotta get down now, but anyway, that's, I'm not in favor.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back, you can just come sit up in the front.
There.
He's already spoken.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, only one comment. Sorry.
My name is Heather Jones. I also live in the neighborhood. We're just two streets away. I love my neighbor. I love my neighborhood. Sorry, it's been a really hard day. Um, we've had a lot of really young families that have grown up in this neighborhood, and, um, with all due respect, in, when that happens, we go from small children to teenagers, and teenagers add more cars to the roads. And children playing in the streets add noise, and no one is asking the city to regulate that because that's what it means to live in a neighborhood. Um, things come and change and do different things. There are a lot of broad statements about a neighborhood being ruined because of this, but we're not talking about a whole neighborhood. We're talking about one house, one very unique house and a family. Um, this is a nice neighborhood, and I was reminded of that a year or so after we moved in when someone, um, told me that it used to be a nicer neighborhood when only BYU professors lived here before people like me moved in. And I would hate for anyone to feel that this neighborhood is too nice for them to live in their own home and, um, make a life there. Um, there are many rules that the Ludlos will have to follow to keep this, um, ADU legal, and they have shown integrity in following those rules and going out of their way. They are a good family. They're not offensive. They're hardworking. They're clean. They bring so many things to our neighborhood, and to assume that having a couple of BYU students in their basement to help. In their basement to help them with the exorbitant cost of living. Um and throwing out a huge amount of what ifs and maybes. I think that those what ifs and maybes are too small for the benefit for the students and the Ludlow's. I would love it if they could get this approved.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Goodwin, I've lived in the neighborhood fifty-eight years. My main concern is not one ADU, but the precedent that will be set by granting these. I know at least three homes where there's illegal renters going on now. And a used car lot sitting in front of one house because of all the people that live there. I would recommend that you do not allow this to happen because it will just grow, it's a can of worms, you can't close back up.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you cannot. You can talk to staff and and bring up other concerns, but the public comments closed.
My name is John Payne, I grew up at eighteen forty north, fourteen fifty east. We moved up there when I was seven, we were the first house upon that upper level. All of the others have been since then. We have twelve children uh in my family, my mom just recently passed away in March. She had seventy-five grandkids, a hundred and ninety great grandchildren and two great greats. That's been a home for our family for since nineteen fifty-seven. We, my mom just recently passed away in March and we made the agreement that we would never rent her home. We would not turn it into a rental, we wouldn't cut it up into different units. And that we would continue to keep that in the family as long as we could. My younger sister Julie has bought the home from the family and is moving in the current process of moving into that home. We would like to argue against ADUs simply because once you open the door, you don't have any more further control. I hear that they're saying that this is only a temporary, you're granting this in perpetuity. This is not something that you have any control over or anyone has any control over. If there's any one place in Utah that I would say was designed to be a single family home area. This is it and this is one of the primary places in all of Utah. That we paid a price to have our homes there and be single family, not opening the door to all these renters. I understand there are other rental units, but I question their legality. And I don't think that granting an ADU in the area is going to do anything but open the door to further deterioration of the neighborhood. So I'm against it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh my goodness, just trying to breathe here, okay. Hi, my name is Stephanie Hots and I live on the same street as the Ludlow's. And um I just had some questions that I'm going to pose in the form of statements that maybe we could review. Um one of the statements that I heard by the Ludlow's was that they didn't intend this, she just said that when she came up here. Um but I have messages that they have posted where they researched. About the ADU before they moved into the neighborhood, before they bought the home. So I just would love for her to address that, to address whether or not she was looking for an ADU specifically before they moved in. And then I would like to know the weight of the signatures. And if the signatures are verified by homeowners, not occupiers, not children living in the home that don't legally. I the children not old enough or don't. I don't know, aren't on the, aren't homeowners. And then I would like to address um the older infrastructure of the neighborhood. And I would like to, um I think all of our neighborhood has experienced power and water pressure issues. And should additional ADUs come into our neighborhood, that's going to put strain on an already aging system. And I'm a little concerned about that. And uh I would also like to address and understand the second kitchen. We've been told that if you have a second kitchen in your basement, that you're required to have an ADU. I have multiple text messages that have stated that and I would like that addressed, I would like to understand that as a homeowner, so thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Ludlow, also live in Provo, I'm the other one on the application for this unit. I just wanted to address a few concerns. So also, we paid a premium to be in this neighborhood as well, more than most because we bought recently. And there's concerns that ADUs lower property values, that wasn't the case with our previous home. We we received a premium sale price because of the ADU, people value that as a buyer. But also we've improved the value of our home by over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars by making improvements. We've sought to be an asset to the community, uh that raises the value of of the neighborhood as well. To just parking issues, we the cars, we have plenty of off-street parking. The code is confusing, we were working in good faith effort to uh to follow the code. The whole process has been confusing, we're doing our best, we're making a good faith effort to uh to follow all that we can. But as far as the second kitchen issue, we were told by the code enforcer that because we have a second kitchen without a legal ADU. That if it is not approved, we would have to remove the kitchen. And that was uh where that came from, so we don't know fully know the law, but that was what we were told in this matter, so clarification would be appreciated. Uh but there's been apartments in this neighborhood for decades, it's not going to change the fabric of the neighborhood by approving a a single case uh ADU. As we stated, we we lived in the neighborhood twenty-five years ago, uh enjoyed being here, um and I wanted to return. There's also not going to be a clinic, there's been a lot of discussion and rumors spread around the neighborhood and false information. Uh there's no intention to, we have a separate office, uh clinic space, we would never do that in our neighborhood. So obviously, I'd like to voice my support for this motion.
Thank you. Yeah, if you'd like to comment, please come sit up on the front just so we can keep things moving at the microphone.
Uh good evening, my name is Micus. I've lived in that neighborhood since nineteen seventy-seven, my family raised my voice there. I've lived in two homes there uh in that in that neighborhood and it's because the neighborhood is a is a family friendly neighborhood. Uh we don't have problems with people not taking care of their yards because they have pride in their property. I have a little question in my mind about uh the the status of how this happened, how this came about. But it seems to me that what I've heard and correct me if I'm wrong, that they were the the applicants have actually been renting. To students before they actually get the permission to do so. And uh it sounds like the, I I think the residents they had before, where they were so good with it, property and obeyed all the rules. Was in a an ADU uh area, approved area, not this. I looked at the map up there and I was impressed when you saw, you had to look really hard to see where this is. A little green, a little red spot up there. That little red spot uh up there is is just the beginning. There are other people who rent legally to relatives. Or to uh sometimes they don't rent, they just live in their homes, but they're not uh, they are not uh, they're legal. They're relatives and and comply with the uh the current zoning situation. And my concern is, you see that red spot up there, there are other homes, these four that I know of, where people are also renting illegally now. And uh I'm going to bet you nine dollars that as soon as this is approved, if it is approved. They they will be here with their papers and then how do you justify turning them down? If you approve this situation, there are rules, laws, we abide by them. I think the 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 family is a good family, I have no problem with that, but.
Thank you.
My name's Ryan Benyon, uh my grandparents uh built the second house, I think, on the street before the street was there and that's the one we now occupy. I have a hard time picking this or or oppose this, but I am not thrilled that the Ludlow's who have been. Renting to students who have not troubled me, I live four houses away from them. Uh are the ones dealing with this uh investigation, or there are other, at least as many people have said, four or five other properties. Within a tenth of a mile uh who have, some of them uh more renters and louder renters. So I would question uh what's going to happen to all the other rental properties? Uh are they going to be forced to comply or are we just going to have another fifty years of. Illegal or unpermitted uh renting because renting has been going on in this neighborhood for about fifty years. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, once again, if you want to comment, please come sit up here on the front row.
I didn't go to the front row, sorry. Hi, I'm Emily, I'm King, I live a block ahead of the proposed property and I'll just get to the point, I'm against the apartment. I feel like all of us, I didn't want to live in Provo, I'm from Salt Lake, I never wanted to move here. But when I got married, I had to move here and I knew Provo is a college town, I'm aware of it. So we very intentionally chose a neighborhood that has the zoning that it has. And it's frustrating to think that we are all going to have to change our desires now and I'm like, I get it, there's a housing crisis. There's some neighborhoods that don't need to have apartments, what about the options for us who would like to have a family neighborhood? You know, I have a fourteen year old, it's really important to me that he has neighbors he knows that he can count on. And that's why I'm against it and I think on a side note, the process is so asinine. I hate the way this happened, it breeds contention, it's not healthy and I really hope you change it, thanks.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay? So can can it, is it, am I able to ask you guys a question?
Please, first of all, um please state your name and city resident, also it's comments, not questions.
I can't ask for clarifying, you guys to clarify something.
No, you can state a desire for it to be clarified and then we can discuss it afterwards.
There's staff too that you could ask questions to, they're right in the front row.
Questions and when all this is, all the testimony is done, we'll answer them.
It's a general comment and and I'll just leave it as a comment and then you can, you know, you can ask it to somebody else, but. You know, Jessica, where's Jessica anyway? Oh, Mike, Mike Stouter, sorry, I live in Provo. So um you know, Jessica explained the ordinance to me, it's not very complicated. Uh there's a couple of, you know, things about it that are making it a little more flexible. But what I'm wondering is, you hear all these people talking, they're saying, look, you know, we moved here for a reason. And there's a difference between a community of transients and a community of single families. And it's naive to think that that's not the case, okay? This is easy, easy peasy, you can go to one extreme or the other, but these are different kinds of communities. And so um I wonder what was the original intent of these ordinances? I mean, clearly people in our neighborhood are in violation, this is a law, right? The ordinance has a force of law and so I don't know how old these ordinances are. But an ordinance regarding single family quote unquote dwellings must mean something. And I don't know what that is, I'm sure you guys will do because this is what you do for a living. But I would love it if somebody could explain to us, you know, what does it mean? What was the intention to create a single family zoned area number one? And if that intention has changed for some reason, why has it changed? Okay, I mean, I understand student pressure, blah, 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 but you know, there's an intent here. It may be very, very old, but I just feel like, I don't, I haven't heard that. What do you guys, you know, you know this stuff, what's the intention? Why did they have this ordinance in the first place? And that might help us understand, you know, what we're talking about, what we're up against. And help you understand why so many people here want to preserve it. You know, we want to conserve something and other people want to change that or break that. And they're.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Stevens, I live in um Oak Hills neighborhood. In fact, I was the neighborhood chair for over a decade. Um and people often called me, they'd find my number online with the city and then they'd call me and say. Uh we're really interested in living in Oak Hills, um but we don't need a house with eight bedrooms, what's the appetite for renting the basement? And so I would say, well, Oak Hills is designated as an R one ten. So the rule is that you can rent um to a mother-in-law or a relative. Um and uh and other uses are not allowed. So the people I talked to said, I'm really glad that I talked to you because I'm not going to buy a house in the neighborhood because I want to rent. Or I need to rent the basement to unrelated individuals. So um that happened many times, so I'm concerned in this situation. That um the applicants bought a house in our neighborhood and were aware of the rules, aware of the R one ten. Zoning that precluded renting to non-relatives and then went ahead and did it anyway. So I'm really perplexed that there was a code violation first. And so that's that's what frustrates me the most, that this code violation. Um all this talk about doing it the right way and making things wonderful um is not true based on past practice. Uh the applicants went ahead and rented to people who they shouldn't rent, shouldn't have rented to and now they got caught. And so now we're all here um sharing our thoughts about the neighborhood. Um so I'm also concerned about the process of six adjacent neighbors signing. Because it's a neighborhood issue, it should be brought up in a neighborhood meeting, um and everyone needs to approve it, so I'm opposed to this ADU.
Thank you. Please come forward, yeah.
Uh my name is Jim Woodard, I live just down the street from the Ludlow's. Um I've heard lots of people talk about their concerns regarding the current situation where people are uh renting. Their home illegally and my concern is, uh I I live there, I know what's happening. But if the city can't um uh properly uh manage and address those concerns. If we add this other complicating factor, how is the city going to be able to also ensure that that uh. If if the ADU is allowed, how are they going to ensure that it's uh being appropriately um. Managed and uh abiding by the guidelines. I'm just concerned that uh I we we've personally called about concerns and they say that they're going to look into it and nothing changes and nothing happens. Uh so I I I just don't understand why when we can't. Enforce the current zoning laws, why add more complications to it? I I'd like to understand how the ADU would be um, the the guidelines would be enforced. And uh I'm probably not asking this appropriately, but I hope you understand what it is I'm trying to say. I have concerns that that just adding more complications is um. Uh just more problems that are not going to be managed by the city and enforced. I I guess it's really an enforcement question, how do you enforce the uh zoning that you allow? And it, because it sure doesn't look like it's happening now, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Martha Cox Ballantyne, I own two houses in the neighborhood and I am in alter, in alterally opposed to the. Expansion of the ADUs that exist in my neighborhood. I don't know exactly what my two houses would sell for, but it's a lot of money and it's my money. And I don't want neighbors that are illegally having ADUs when I don't have them. And make money from them and um I've been informed by one of the owners of this property under question. That they have an eight percent mortgage, when they came to the neighborhood, they signed that mortgage. They knew how much money they were going to have to pay for that big house with what I think is. with what I think is twelve bedrooms or an enormous number of bedrooms, enormous number of bathrooms and a huge drive-through driveway that can go on forever and you can fit lots of cars there that are not on the street. So, that's number one. Number two is, this is a divisive issue. Sometimes people call it divisive, but I call it a big problem in our ward, in our neighborhood to have this new fight going on, and I am dismayed by this experience. And so that is a, an emotional and spiritual problem that has come to our neighborhood because of this brouhaha over the Ludlows' house, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. If I can just start off by saying, I think we got the entire A D U debate covered in that public comment, every single side we've been hearing and every conversation on this was represented tonight, right, on this one particular, um, property, so. What thoughts are we having? There were several, uh, questions on clarity, things like that, where do we want to go? Lisa?
Um, back to the beginning of all the comments, um, like you said, this is, like, we've been talking about these very same problems and how we don't know how to attack this with enforcement when people misrepresent themselves when the enforcement goes out and we, um, I have problems with the fact that, first of all, the house was built with a second kitchen, was there ever a second kitchen agreement signed?
Um, I don't know, from my understanding, the house was built in the mid-sixties, I do not believe
Probably didn't exist.
Required it at that time.
Okay, so it seems to me that that should have had to have been added with the sell, with the sale of the property that they
So just to clarify that point, since the question was asked, the second kitchen agreement means you cannot use that area for an A D U. The second kitchen agreement is a covenant that you will not use it as an A D U and it's recorded with the city. So, um,
So it's probably
People who have a second kitchen, people who have a second kitchen can keep their second kitchen if they have a second kitchen agreement with the city and if it's not being used as an A D U. I don't know off the top of my head when that came into effect, I think probably
In the nineties, maybe?
Yeah, thirty, thirty years ago or so, um. I can try to find it out, I'll look it up right now, but I'm not sure.
We probably have an ongoing problem in these older neighborhoods because the second kitchen agreement existed after the houses existed, so there's a lot of people who are flying under the radar, but just for lack of information.
There was also a question, I'm sorry if I may, there was also a question asked about the illegal ones that are there now. I received an email today from a neighbor, resident of the neighborhood that gave five or six or seven, um, addresses of houses that they questioned were legal or not. I forwarded that over to zoning enforcement, zoning enforcement will go out and check on each one of those and see if they are legal or not. If they are not legal, if we can verify that they are not legal, we will pursue enforcement action against them.
Can you, can you clarify for us, what would constitute a legal rental in this, in this zone?
They would have had to get approval for it at some point in, in the past where that was allowed. I can't think of a time in this neighborhood where they were allowed.
Except, there is a provision if you're over sixty-five. Sixty, if you're over sixty.
Used to be sixty-five, but it was recently changed to sixty.
Okay, so if you're over sixty, you can have an apartment so that someone can live there and take care of you as you age in your home, correct?
That's correct.
So that's one legal use, another legal use would be putting your in-laws there. Having your in-laws live there in the, in the second apartment.
Well, in-laws would be part of the family, so that wouldn't violate the single-family definition.
Um, and your children.
But to add a kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom in the basement for them, um, that would violate zoning. They would need to have a second kitchen agreement for that kitchen in the basement.
Right, they could have them there, but they'd have to have a second kitchen agreement, correct?
Yes.
Because it gives you permission to rent to family if you use the kitchen, correct? Am I remembering the wording on it correctly?
It doesn't violate the definition of family, so it's legal in terms of the family being there, but you've created a second unit. Um, yeah, illegally.
Okay. Um, I guess my problem is if there's so many illegal ones, why are we mad that someone's trying to do it right? And, um, that's just something to ponder because it's something we've talked about every time we have reviewed an A D U zone change request. Because it where, somebody was in violation, which I have issues with, that, because usually it's they know. And they got caught and then they're trying to fix it, and that's where I can appreciate it because the A D U zoning gives the neighborhood some safety. It's not perfect, but it gives the neighborhood some safety because it has to be owner occupied. So it's not somebody that's just an investor that's bought up a property and is just renting it out willy-nilly. So I know all the problems that come with it and I know it's not perfect, but that is the one thing I do like about the option for an A D U. Is that you do get at least one owner who's living in the house instead of just renting it. Um, I heard in the presentation that the current owners abided by all occupancy limits, um, because they had a family and no more than three unrelated adults, and I think that's a misunderstanding. Three unrelated adults is the same thing as a family, so they're not both allowed together, that would be two families. So if I understood that correctly, that was troubling to me. Um, they said they had a rental dwelling license. Um, but I think that was just so that the house could be rented, not so that the second unit could be rented. Because if they actually had that, then it, an A D U hadn't been approved, so I just feel like there's a lot of misunderstandings about the process, misunderstanding about what was actually happening, what can happen. And, uh, the, you guys are right, it's a horrible process. I hate everything about rules in Provo that require us to rat on our neighbors um, or choose sides in order to enjoy our property, but the reality is it's what we have on the books right now. So right now, we still need to address this issue, this problem, and we need to address the goals that it was created because of, which are providing more housing options in ways that preserve neighborhoods. And so our job tonight is to determine if the neighborhood is preserved by this request. And honestly, I feel like this particular property is the type of property that the city council was thinking of when they came up with this rule. It doesn't increase the on-street parking, it's a large enough unit to actually rent to a family instead of unrelated, um, individuals, which would contribute to the neighborhood as well. But the flip side to that is that we can't guarantee that it will always be that way and that these will always be the owners. And, um, though the rental dwelling license that's required screens for some of those things, it's just, I don't know, I don't know how to address it when it feels like it meets the intent of the ordinance. But it, it doesn't jive well with the community as a whole. Okay, I'm done.
So I think, can I bring up two things? One, I thought the question of what was the initial intent, intent of a single-family neighborhood zoning? I thought that was a good question. What is the city's intent with a single-family neighborhood zone? What was the intent and is that still the intent now? Um, the second thing that I feel like is that the process really is not good. I, I'm in complete agreement that this has really created a lot of turmoil amongst the neighborhood. And people who love each other, who care about each other and who are now having to argue or be against each other in some way, that it just doesn't feel right the way this process is. And I don't think we should be making any decisions until the city council comes up with a better way to do this. Because, and I don't know if we can just say anything like that, that we just feel like we can't make a decision like this based on the way this process is. Because people have signed their names or they have agreed to things based on information that may not have been true. There are people on both of these lists, by the way, same person. Same person on one list, same person on the other list, so what does that say? It says that they were confused and it says that they like their neighbors, right? But any decision that is made has to be made not for the people because it's not for the people, this is for the property. We're making a decision for the property and if something happens to the Ludlows, heaven forbid, and they have to move, which would be terrible and very sad. They have to sell this property and leave, what's going to happen next? What happens then? And then if the, and all the concerns about if the city has a hard time enforcing zoning with the laws that they have, this complicates it even more, and now what have you done? And so all of those, so the argument of, well, it, it brings, it's a way to bring illegal units into compliance. No, we probably ought to just enforce the laws that we have on the books. And then deal with, you know, with what we have. So, I would really like to know, and I think the city council needs to really define, what is a single-family neighborhood and is it worth preserving it as such? Because we do see what happens when it gets chopped up. And my neighborhood, I'm lower, right? The homes in my neighborhood are smaller, we have lots of legal A D Us, we're in, on that map, we have lots of of spaces where there are A D Us allowable, I am, I happen to be on a portion of the street where there are no A D Us allowed. My neighbors at one point said, could we have an A D U? And they asked the neighbors and the neighbors respectfully, we love these people, we respectfully said, no. Because we already have one on the corner that is legal and there are ten cars there, always, ten cars. Now, we have six children, at one point, I will admit, we had eight cars. So we had lots of cars ourselves, but we were very careful to try and stack them and get them off the street because we're respectful of the neighborhood and of what we're doing. But those renters, bless them, we love them, but they park all up and down and there's no, and then the driveway's empty. Because they don't have the same concern for the neighborhood. So then you go to try down the street and try to turn and you can't see because they've got, you know, trucks and all sorts of things parked right on the street where you can't see, and then there's kids riding their bikes and walking to school. And you see the problem with too many cars and too many things with people not respecting those single-family neighborhood environments. So, I would really love to not have to make a decision and let the city council clean up this whole process. I don't think this is fair to anybody, the way they've had to do this. And I don't understand why you have to have sixty-six percent and then when that seemed to drop down, then you don't have to have it? There's another alternative and you just move forward with it? I guess that confuses me, can you explain that a little better too?
Right, so it is, it is kind of confusing because there is such a longstanding history with A D Us uh, and where they are allowed and when state legislation has come through and wanted to see more A D Us. Um, the reason that we have the sixty-six percent was started with the administrative process that no longer exists. But my understanding is that council wanted to maintain an option for people who do not live in the areas shown on the map. So instead of doing a special, uh, use permit that would be administrative, which didn't jive with our, our legal department, they changed it to the opportunity to do a legislative motion, which would be an ordinance text amendment. But they kept the requirements the same as what the special use permit was. Uh, however, we already have in our code the opportunity to do an ordinance text amendment. Um, so the application, the actual planning application has the same name, it's ordinance text amendment, whether you get the sixty-six percent signature or you're just doing an ordinance text amendment. Um, the differences are what's required with the upload. And I believe that one of the intent of having that signature is so that we, the council can make a decision with some understanding of the feelings of the immediate neighbor. Um, obviously, they still want to hear from the surrounding neighborhoods or surrounding neighbors. But I believe that they wanted to see that the immediate neighbors who would be most directly impacted, that there was initial support there. Really, the reason that we can switch between the two is because the intent is the same and most of the requirements are the same, the special use permit had the additional signatures as a requirement.
But this, this has recently come up as an issue. City council staff and planning staff already have a meeting set up for next week to discuss amending the code, to fix some of the problems and frustrations that you have felt. And taking out this need for signatures will be one of those things that we're going to suggest.
So is it okay for us to say we would like to continue this as well? Let the city council fix this process.
I want to have a discussion first before we make anything like that.
I'm just wondering if that's an option.
Of course it is.
Yeah.
Is that an option?
Yeah, of course it is, but again, because you're a recommending body to the council, does that really make sense? Shouldn't you just move it on to them? Approval or denial, it seems like it's going to be a council decision.
I wanted to say, um, for the record, so you all know, we're not paid, we are volunteers. So, if you're mad at us, we're not getting paid with your tax money to make you angry, um. And, uh, I wanted to say, the point about the contradictions is totally valid. I've been talking to the planning commission members about this and I think we have two points of contradiction. I think one is in the general plan where we try and satisfy, we want to preserve the single-family neighborhoods and we need more housing of, of different varieties, right? And so that sometimes if we don't make us, it's like we're trying to do both things in a single process. And that's why we have this situation. I also think there was a lot of pressure on both sides when city council, um, as far as, from the public, when city council took away the administrative one. So there's a lot of pressure to keep it, there's a lot of pressure to get rid of it, um, because it, it didn't go through city council and, and they seem to want to have a direct, direct oversight, like as Jessica said, um. Anyway, all that to say, this is definitely contradictory, it's hugely problematic, um, I, I don't share the feelings about renters that some people do. I didn't magically become a better human being because I bought a house, I just can't get done with that idea. Um, I don't agree with that. Um, and I wanted to remind everybody, it's, it's, every property owner's right to make an application to the city to change the code. I mean, I, I don't think you should be mad at anybody for trying to do that. Um, you can be mad about lots of other things, but they could try and zone it something crazy and they still have the right to apply, even if it's never going to happen. Um, so that's part of the city process, this due process, um, basically with our code. So I just want to point that out that, um, I think people have been mad that we were even listening to this or they, we even let them do it. And it's like, we can't really say like, no, not you about this kind of thing, I just want to clarify that about the cities processes and stuff. Um, I do think that this would be more ideal than a lot of properties we've seen, like Lisa said, as far as the size of it, because I would love to see a family in there, but I, one thing that was the drawback of city council choosing to take this away from the administrative processes that with, it was going to be administrative process, it would have been conditional use that wasn't running with the land. But now it is because it's text ordinance amendment, which is the way that city council can get it to them, instead of it going through us or staff. And so, um, just so you all know, this is the background to my thoughts. Um, and so that is a concern to me as well. I, who am generally very pro A D U, I live in a single-family neighborhood that doesn't allow them, but I, I would be fine with my neighbors having these, um, myself. But I do think that it should be conditional use and I do think that, um, we have major problems with enforcement. I, and I think enforcement, I think though, it does bring up a similar problem as the signatures in my view. Um, as far as being divisive and like making neighbors have trouble with each other, because you have to, you do have to tell on each other, you have to report it, that we, we can't know, the, the staff can't possibly know. Anyway, sorry to just talk to them, but this is my, I want people to know how, how the process works as well, but um, I also feel to that point, I feel it's kind of like, I understand that some of these processes we should make better, but to some extent, there's always going to be conflict between human beings and it's not really our job to like regulate people's relationships and emotions. Like, that's their job and they should lobby to, like, talk to the city council to change things they don't like. And, you know, if they really feel strongly, just, you can tell your neighbor that, I don't know, it's just, I understand it's hard, but like, this is what happens when we don't agree and there are going to be things we don't agree on. Um, so yeah, uh, those are mostly all my thoughts and I really agree that we should probably, yeah, I, I think that this is just something city council has to work out because it is ultimately there, they chose to change it to be under their, like, them having the final say. They're the ones who can fix it, not us, so I do think that eventually we should continue it, I mean, uh, to make a decision to send to them.
So I love what So I love what Barbie said about should be conditional use. So notice how everybody loves the Ludlow's and they're gonna do great and they're gonna have, or you, you know, they're gonna use it respectfully. It's not them, it's the next person. It's the, it's tagging this to the property that is the problem in my mind. And then you've tagged it to all the others because you're right, all those others that are not, not compliant right now are gonna come in. And they're gonna ask for the same thing. Now you have lots of permanent ADU properties and you don't know how that's gonna go later, right?
Right.
So if you did a conditional use, it's much better. If you, if they said, we just need it for a few years, I'd love to see that there was a provision where somebody could apply for a two-year conditional use. Just to get them through a rough patch. Everybody would say, great, right? And then that's over.
This is kind of come full circle.
It's a way to compromise, right? To allow somebody to afford something temporarily who honestly wants to stay there, because you know, that's how I feel about this too. That I, I know that this is gonna get rough and people might need some help, but on a conditional basis where it's tied to only them. And we can hold them accountable.
The land, yeah. Well, I wanted to say, it also, this also came full circle because when the city council, if you'll go back. Everybody and watch the discussions, the comments that happened. When the city council decided to make this not the conditional use permit done by staff or us and over to a text ordinance amendment. Um, it was the people who don't want ADUs who made it be permanent. Because they said, take away the ability for us to have a conditional use that your neighbors approve of. We don't want it at all. But then what they did is just make it, you know, I'm saying that was kind of the result of that. So I think it's kind of. I mean, council, I think is listening, but in one situation, everybody comes on this side and then on the other situation, they come on the other side. So. I do think that that's something that can, council needs to address with, um, all their constituents because. It's kind of like flip flopping a lot right now. And it would be nice to stabilize the code because.
It's hard.
It's, it's hard and, um, you know, it might be hard to say. Like all the people, including myself, who made comments in support of keeping a conditional use. We will be mad if they take it away completely and make areas that are only, um, single family or whatever their zone is, right? Um, but that's probably what would be the cleanest, to be honest, rather than. The exception, and I'm saying this again as an ADU person, like it's just too messy. It's just too messy. Um, but I think we need to just make a decision or they need, they need to make a decision about this, you know?
Thank you. Comments over here? Matthew?
Jessica, I'm gonna ask you to come back. I've got some clarifying questions. Um, from both comments I've heard here and comments, well, in letters in the, in the staff report. First of all, I just want to say, it also makes me sad that there's so much contention around this. So anything we can do, especially with other things that happened today in our valley. To reduce contention is just brilliant. And I hope the bill and staff and. The city council can solve some of this so that this is a more productive, happy conversation. But I agree, everybody has the right to do this. So a couple of clarifying questions. So I think I heard four beds, eighteen hundred square foot ADU. We do not have a rule. About a size of an ADU currently in the code anywhere. I know some other cities actually do. I just want to clarify, because that, that's a large. That's, that's a single family home on its own, right?
Yes, um, our rule regarding size is applied to detached structures and. Is that it has to have a smaller square footage and smaller, um, height than the main dwelling. We. Do not have a size requirement that I'm aware of, and it's an internal attached ADU.
Okay, thank you. Um, it was also something about, uh. Maintaining places, are there any places in the city that. By legal right could never have an ADU? I think the answer to that is only if there's in some CCNRs. Because I just want you to clarify this, because I think when the state said cities have to have certain number of ADUs. And the way our city, our city council responded to that. If the, uh, CCNRs like in a homeowner association type neighborhood said, no. That is different than what we're dealing with here. Can you just help clarify where, right?
Right.
Anyone can, I, I just want to clarify, everyone has the right to apply. Unless in certain CCNR kind of conditions, they've been told, no, 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 never.
CCNRs are the typical tool that you're, you're right. In the case we were talking about earlier in Broadview Shores in West Provo. It's in these zone zoning ordinance for that development. There's a special zone for that development.
It's in both.
It's in the zone.
Okay.
That you can't do it.
Okay.
So it's usually CCNRs, but it's not always that way.
Okay. Other than that, though.
Right.
There were also some specific zones that are listed, like the R two PD zones that. It doesn't matter how big your house is, you can't have it, you can't even ask.
Basically outside of some of those pockets. So we've seen the map and we think, oh, therefore you can't have ADUs. No, no, you can actually have ADUs as long as you apply. And follow the process in lots of places. And it gets approved, right, right?
If you're following the process to do that ordinance text amendment to add your home to the map.
I've also heard the term kind of in perpetuity, this idea. I didn't think that was correct. I thought they also had to apply. Some kind of landlord permit that then every year they have to do. So yes, it goes with the land, but. There's also an individual component.
That, that is correct. So the ordinance text amendment would add the property to the map. That's the part that's in perpetuity. No other future owner would have to do an ordinance text amendment. But the current owner would have to get a rental dwelling license and that is renewed every year. And any future owner would have to apply for a new rent license that would be in their name.
And the types of things associated with that are proving owner occupancy in either. The main house or the ADU property.
Yeah.
Right? And what other kinds of things?
Um, so owner occupancy, uh, we ask for floor plans, so we know where the ADU actually is. Like in conjunction to the main house. Um, and we also ask for a site plan to show that they're meeting the parking requirements.
So, so I know some of this stuff. I'm asking so that everyone here kind of hears it, but I think saying that this is in perpetuity isn't quite right. I, I, I don't totally disagree with the contin- conditional use, except that there's a whole nother process. That does go with the individual in the property.
Yes, it is, it's a two face.
I would say that's a much lower bar, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, but in comparison to the illegal ADU conversation that we keep having, the legal units. This is a way that we actually do give this, the city, for those who are doing it right, a little bit better process. Than neighbors complaining about neighbors.
Yeah, this, having a rental license gives us, uh, more opportunity to be in contact directly with property owners.
And educate them and do lots of things that don't happen in the complaint for code enforcement shows up and tries to enforce.
Yes.
Right? Okay. There was a water pressure comment that I, I am curious about, and Bill, you might be better suited to speak to this. So generally, ADUs actually improve the efficient, not the efficiency, the. Uh, manner in which we use our infrastructure because it's not quarter acre lots, for example. Every two hundred fifty feet connecting to a sewer, it's a little more useful. If that's, if you understand what I mean.
Yes, that's.
The comment that the water pressure is already low up there does concern me. Do you know anything or can you think of anything about how we could test that? Or do we, has this been a complaint before? And how do we use play in that? Because you and I've actually had this conversation in the past, but could you help address that just a little bit?
The subdivision is old enough that I wouldn't be surprised if there are water pressure issues and some other utility issues. But you've also heard testimony tonight, we've had families up there with a lot of children. And there are probably houses up there with ADUs that have fewer people in them than traditional families that have lived in the area. So it's really hard to measure that.
Yeah.
Uh, utility impact when we have such a wide swing in family size in this, in this community.
With the potential, I know it's hard to speculate, with the new development. The annexation parcel north of the cemetery. And I think there's a water tank associated with that. Would that help anything going on in this neighborhood, water pressure wise?
I think they're in a different pressure zone, so I don't believe that will help.
Don't believe that would, okay. Um, last thought about parking on the street, except for certain areas of Provo. These are public streets. Anybody could park there whenever they want, as long as there's some other rules, right? They can't park there in, the car can't not move indefinitely. We don't want these used car lots, so they shouldn't be parking on the grass. There is code enforcement for that.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, so unless it's, it's private streets that are, um, enforced by HOAs. Or there are certain areas of the city that do have parking permit programs. Um, other than those designated areas, the, the street is public right of way. So as long as you're not parking in a way that is. A parking violation, you can park there, but there is specifically violations for. Inoperable vehicles, which is a vehicle that has not moved in seventy-two hours. So you're not supposed to be there.
So you could also call in code enforcement if there were cars just sitting there for more than seventy-two hours and get them towed away.
It would be parking enforcement, but.
Same, sorry, yes.
Yep.
But ADUs are supposed to have off-street parking for their renters.
Correct.
And so if they're not using that, or not having it or providing it, that's also breaking the code.
Right, agree.
Well, it has to be provided, it doesn't necessarily have to be used.
Right.
Um, could staff maybe speak to this? My understanding is, um, as Michael was saying, that generally. ADUs do not put more strain than say a family on utilities and resources. I mean, we're going from a twelve bedroom home. To, it sounds like five plus three renters. You live in the space?
I, I can't speak to that personally. Our, our public works department would have the best information on that. But it is a general understanding that, yes, ADUs would be roughly neutral.
Other comments?
Yeah, um. I hope city staff doesn't mind me pointing out, we do have, uh, code enforcement here, right? In the, in the back. You could wave your hand. Um, he loves enforcement. Um, I've, I've brought, I remember bringing up something once in a, in one of our study sessions. And he came up to me right afterwards and says, give me the address, I'll go. He loves investigating. And it's driven by, enforcement is driven by, uh, neighborhood complaints. Um, if you haven't met him before or, or met with some of the staff, they, they're. They're dedicated professionals who. Try and build the cases and, and it's a, they have to build a, a case. And so I, I think, um, you know, that's one thing. Uh, number two, I. I'm, I'm deeply sympathetic to some of the, the concerns that the neighbors have. Some of them feel a little bit. Doesn't add up. There's concerns with parking, but there's clearly like room for twelve or fifteen cars on this, this lot. There's concerns about overcrowding, but it's a five thousand square foot home with twelve bedrooms. Um, sounds like gobs of the homes have second kitchens. So there's part of me that's like, why? Why are we picking on the Ludlow's when there's a dozen, you know, half dozen other homes out of compliance? Um, the second, I, I guess the third thing I, I take issue with is, uh. Kind of the notion of, uh, to me, it comes off as like exclusionary zoning and, and the. Defining the single family residential area. I grew up in Provo, I was born and raised here. Moved here in nineteen eighty, uh, born in Provo, moved from Smashport to Provo in nineteen eighty-three, rented a home for. Oh, my parents rented a home, uh, for, for about nine months while, uh, a home three blocks down was being built. Went to Provo Salimentary, went to Fair Junior High, went to Timview. Uh, I grew up in a single family neighborhood. Uh, single family all up and down the street. And, uh, my, my church boundaries included in a bunch of apartments. And exposed me to a lot of different people and my sisters and my brother too, and. I think it enriched, uh, it enriched my life. I, I went on to. Go to Cornell University. I was roommates with, uh. Uh, Merrill Ballantyne and, and, uh. And their other son, Richard. I, I know the Ballantynes. Uh, went on to law school and I'm, I'm grateful that I, I grew up in a. In a neighborhood that was open to having other people in it that could be a good influence in my life. So I'm. Uh, kind of sit, doesn't sit well with me that. Um, this is like single family, single family, only family only. Cause there's more than just families. Uh, traditional notions of family that contribute to the community and, uh. And to society. I've been on the planning commission for five years, over five years with Lisa Jensen and. And this is one of the biggest things, um, commission and city has wrestled with, and I do mean wrestled. Cause there are no easy answers in it. Um, cause we try to address housing affordability and. And housing crisis and at the same time, like I don't believe in giving breaks, financial breaks to people special. I don't, I don't buy that. Um, so any decision I make isn't gonna be because of sympathy for that. But also look at this property as if, if they're, if you're gonna have a, an ADU. This is kind of property where you. One, it qualifies for it. It, it meets the standards of where an ADU would be, uh, allowed. Um, whereas, you know, my street doesn't. There's not, it's limited by parking. Um, among other reasons. Uh, anyways, that's just my thoughts on it. I don't have anything else.
Okay, any other comments?
Just that it also seems like, uh, ADUs are attempting to formalize an informal. Life cycle of a home that has existed for hundreds of years, right? Mother-in-law suites and moving in. Your, your parents, once they're older or, you know, the kids move out and you, you rent to the basement. Like I think this is a process that's been happening for a very long time. It's why there's so many illegal ADUs. But I think this is just attempting to formalize the way we've treated housing for a very long time, which is. A way to keep a number of different types of families and, and types of family units. In a variety of neighborhoods and, yeah, contributing in different ways. Yeah, and so, but I think it gets kind of messy when it's like. This kind of stilted process to also treat housing affordability and it's a land use issue and all these other things, so, yeah, it's very complicated, but.
Yeah, I think just to chime in here on some of my thoughts. ADUs are such a hard problem. I struggle with them, um, and I struggle with all the things we hear about them that don't even make sense. Um, you hear politicians telling you it's gonna raise your home values and it's gonna make homes cheaper. And it's like, that doesn't make sense. Um, we spend hours and hours on one single house to create one single unit. We could have in many meetings approve a sixty unit building and provide way more housing than this does. Um, on the other hand, you know what? I have people that have put ADUs in. I live on the west side where it's allowed. It doesn't really impact the neighborhood that much. It doesn't ruin it, um, especially when it's not every house. I can see where there could be a threshold there where that becomes a, a different thing. Um, so it's just hard and it's messy and it's unfortunate in my opinion. That in an attempt to make more affordable housing, we've gotten distracted with one of the least effective ways to create affordable housing, really, if you think about it. And so, um, it's a hard thing. Um, I don't usually do this, but honestly, on this one. It's council's decision. We're making a recommendation. I plan to vote on whatever's the lower vote so that we spend a split vote and catch their attention that this is an issue and there's no clean answers. And get them to come watch the mission, the meeting and see what the concerns were and hopefully clean up some of this kind of thing. Cause yeah, it's gonna keep going. There's no resolution to this. So.
And I just, um, I really love that the city has made a provision that you can be sixty years old and have renters in your home. That keeps people in their homes. That's that cycle of turnover, which is so good and so important. And I also really love that you can have your in-laws live there, because that's what they want to do too. And I think that's great. And that's already allowed. So I think that's important to understand that many of those uses are already allowed.
Let me just interject that they're only allowed if you have. If you live in a place that allows a second kitchen. And you've signed up, you have permission to have family renting that unit.
No, so, okay, I have a second kitchen. And we did a second kitchen agreement. And I asked the city once if I could have my nephew staying with us. We didn't take rent from him, but he stayed with us.
Right, that's legal, yeah.
So.
But if you have the second kitchen for them to have their own space, you still need to have that agreement signed, is what I'm saying.
No, not to have in there as my family living, no. No, not to have in there as my family living, no.
With when a property has a second kitchen, it is supposed to have a second kitchen agreement. That's just saying that the property owner is acknowledging that there is a second kitchen that does not constitute a second unit. And they're agreeing to keep the occupancy to family.
So we're both saying the same thing, but I just wanted to point out that you can't just have a second kitchen willy-nilly.
You're supposed to sign a second.
Nor do you need one in order to have family living with you. So.
Yeah.
Yes.
I also do think it is important to acknowledge that different people want different things in their neighborhood. They have different value statements that are attached to that, right? I love using the example of my mother-in-law who lives on a farm in Idaho and was once complaining to us that they were building a house super close to her. And it was upsetting her and we finally go visit her and it's like half a mile across the field and you can barely see the thing, but that was too close for her, right? Um, and people have that. They have different things that they want to see in their neighborhood and that's important for us to remember. And unfortunately, with all these pressures we've been getting from the state, et cetera, it is starting to say some of these have to give a little bit because there's so many pressures from so many different sides. And the question about, you know, R one zones, what were they? They were to maintain single family homes. But the question has become, as family sizes shrink, as neighborhoods turn over, as costs of land, materials, everything is expensive, interest rates are high, everything, is that still a viable model? And that's something I think we're really wrestling with right now because people did buy into these kinds of neighborhoods and had an expectation and want that and want to maintain that. And it's a natural tension that occurs, right? And so i- it's a complex, it's a hard issue, but we need to make a decision um, and move forward. So are we ready for a motion? What do we want to do here?
I'm ready to make a motion. Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we give a recommend approval to item number two. Alan and Joanna Ludlow request an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code fourteen point three zero point zero two zero to add a property in the R one ten zone areas permitting ADUs located at eighteen forty one north fifteen fifty east Oak Hills neighborhood. Uh, and consistent with the recommendations of the set report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion on the motion before we vote?
I'm really torn about which way to vote. And maybe this is a not a discussion on the motion, but I hate the process and I want it to be fixed before something gets approved without the right restrictions. But I also feel like this property of any that we've heard meets the expectation of the city council's goals more than anything
we've seen.
We've seen. And so I would, I would vote yea because of that. But nay for and a bunch of reasons. And so I don't know how to send that message to the city council.
It feels, I feel similarly. I feel kind of like, well, I feel like with this, I just want city council to handle it because I feel like this is like, it's ultimately their decision. And I also would like to emphasize to them that the process needs to be changed. And it would be really awesome if there was a way that we don't actually have to spend this much time on every single ADU in that somebody tries to make because it's is it's too much. I don't think it's practical.
I don't, I don't take personal nay. Um, you guys know that.
No, no, no.
But I think, I think if you are like vote no, and then and then let's put down your reasons and then that we go forward that to city council.
Can we do that after the vote so that you have a list if it doesn't pass of what everyone's concerns are? Okay.
Bill, is that the right way to push this into city council with a little extra attention? Is that the best way?
That's fine, yeah.
Or if if my motion fails, someone else could bring up another motion, right? We can, we can have another motion put forward.
I think we're good with one.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so let's start the vote with Matthew.
Trying to think about the motion. The motion was to
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval in in uh accordance with the with the staff recommendation. I'll vote yea.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
All right. And I'll vote nay. So I believe that was four yea and three nay. Is that correct?
So it passed.
Okay, so it passes um with a split vote. Okay.
Not split, it passed.
And and if you wanna, I think now would be a good time to maybe bring up some of your concerns there if you feel the need to.
But I'm happy to hear the concerns. I've got two other items I really need to be heard tonight.
Okay, my concerns are fast called. I have a concern that we're making decisions on items that are in that are breaking the law currently that that they can get out of it this way. And I have concerns that the process is horrible and it's way too time consuming.
My only request is that city council watch the meeting and hear all the community concerns and the process concerns and the contention, et cetera.
I I agree with that, but I would be satisfied with that.
Yeah, and I think there's a better way so that you can allow people to do things, but make it conditional to the person and make it even short term.
I really like that suggestion. That has nothing to do with the motion, but I think it's a great idea for a solution.
Okay. Excellent. So that finishes that item. Um, as commission, um, director Pepperoni said, we have two items that need to be done because there's a time limitation on it. However, we also very much need a break. So let's
Let's just finish.
Shall we read them in and then we'll take a quick break?
Yes, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We'll read them in, start it, but then we'll go take a break.
Reading in both of them, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you read them in, then you've started the items before nine o'clock, so that would be good.
Okay, so we're gonna read in both items three and four. Item three is Development Services requests ordinance text amendments to title fourteen to remove data centers as permitted or conditional uses through all zones. And item four, Sandy, if you can flip there quick. My iPad battery is running low, so. We'll see if I can get it here. Okay, item four, I've got it. Developmental Services proposes adoption of city policy and amendments to Provo City Code Title fourteen to address data processing services, electricity regulating substations and electric small generation as permitted principal or conditional uses. And this is a citywide application. So with that, now that they're officially read in before nine P M, uh, we're gonna take a very short five-minute break. Um, and then we'll come back and hear these items. Yeah, you can stand during the meeting. We don't mind. Okay, let's do this. So we've already read in the items, so we'll turn over the time to Hannah to present for us.
Great. These items come together as a package set. The first one, item three, is straightforward, hopefully a bit of a breather between two heavier items. The council asked that we create a data center over, data center overlay zone based on the standards that we were already discussing and bringing to them, which are item four. Uh, but to do that, we first need to clean up where they are currently permitted. It just buzzed at me, but it didn't actually switch. Oh, you're totally good. All right. So they are, this ordinance would remove them from the nineteen zones where they are currently permitted or conditional uses, cleaning the slate. So then every developer that would like to build a data center coming forward would have to apply for a rezone for the overlay zone. This is the map of where they are currently allowed on the left. This map, however, does not include the R one and R two zones where they are permitted under the broader office uses in our SLU codes. And the new data center overlay would only be applicable to light manufacturing and plant industrial commercial zones that meet other requirements. Any questions or concerns about this item?
Yeah, I just just something that came up, it kind of goes with both. But as I was thinking about it, can you define a data center for me? And let me lay the groundwork here. I've got a bank of four servers in my office that I do bioinformatic analysis on, probably not a data center. There's a server room in the building. There's a larger server facility at BYU. At the company we founded, there's a server room we've got set up. Like, when has that become a data center?
Typically, if there is a server room adjacent to another business, it's kind of accessory to that business use. A data center is a building of just server rooms. That is its primary function. It supports other external offsite businesses typically. By definition, though, they are also not involved in any sort of Bitcoin mining or blockchain work. That is a separate category of land uses.
Is that a separate category that would still be permitted or not?
No, not permitted under this.
Okay, um. Yeah, I just feel like as we write the new ordinance, maybe we should think about putting sizes in there because computation is constantly changing, right? How much you can fit in a room, for example. And it seems like our concerns and what we're trying to achieve here has more to do with electricity consumption, the power, than it does how many computers you actually have, right? So anyway, just a thought as we move forward through this.
Are we just asking questions on item three or do you want questions for both?
It would probably be good to move through item three, just so that if item four does get continued, we at least have this out of the way. We are working toward that October twenty third moratorium. Um, I'd like to make sure you can get through as much of the material as possible.
Okay, well, then the only question I have about item three is on page seven of the staff report. Um, it's at the very top, it says, um, professional services are permitted principal uses. And everywhere else you said except sixty five fifty, and I think you meant to add except there.
Yes, there were a couple minor word cleanups. That is one that I caught the day after staff reports.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that didn't get overlooked.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a data center question? I don't know if it's three or four where it matters, but I was reading today on the Delta Utah stuff that's coming, this huge center that's coming. Do we address the water consumption issue or the energy issue head on? Or do we let the developer propose what they need? I can just, I mean, if we
That's item four.
That's an item four. That's solidly true, the terrain of item four, but don't worry, I I do try to address that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So should we move to a motion on this one?
I thought we wanted to hear them both.
Uh, we need to hear public comment.
Oh, public comment, right? I'm I'm getting ahead of ourselves.
Do we want to treat them separately, though? I think we can and just vote on this one and do it quickly and then we can spend time.
Up to you, Esther.
We've already read it in, so we'll continue talking about it. Um, so we'll open it for public comment since the applicant is the city. Anyone here for wanting to comment on this item? You have two minutes for your comment.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Anything that we can do to restrict data centers in Provo would be amazing considering there all of the usage of water and energy and also just primarily what's funneled through data centers is not something that we hear in Provo, or I believe is something that we want culturally happening here on our own property. So I think it would be a good thing to really restrict them and not use our precious water on things that we don't love running through data centers. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and a motion.
Oh, I just want to say I'm glad that it, this reduces the amount, right? That she says, yeah, I'm glad to see that. Um. Yeah, because the way it was before was, I wasn't excited about the potential of having them other places.
My favorite part is that it's, um, a conditional use. Like it's making them so they're not permitted.
Can you restrict what kind of data goes through a data center? You can't restrict that, can you? No.
Okay, um, yeah, same comments. I think it's good. It cleans up things. It was too permissive. And that's coming from someone who I'm actually not against data centers. I think in addition to things that maybe we don't like, there's also your medical records that go through data centers, every communication you have. Um, even in your messaging app on your phone uses a data center, et cetera, right? These are the backbone of the interconnected economy that we have. As AI grows, they're gonna become more necessary. And, you know, hopefully that AI gets used for good things. That's what it comes down to. So.
I I have a question. So you may remember I was not happy with the fact that people, maybe this is for the next one, but, um, they didn't have to say who they were. I feel like that we should not allow that. I think we should know who we're dealing with before we have a long-term relationship with them.
Let's have a conversation on item four on that. Matthew?
I was just gonna add on your comment, the alternative of not allowing them, not necessarily in Provo, but like in Utah or this big one that's coming to Delta, is that if China gets them, we have a different problem. I have nothing against China people. But if China gets control of the data flow, we are we are in deep trouble. So we need to allow them. We need to have some mechanism. Uh, the one in Delta, uh, what I was reading today has found figured an amazing way to not use much water.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think there's some really cool things that we could be a leader of rather than a feeling some of the penalties of this, but I agree with you. I think we
And I think you hit it right on the head. I think going forward, we should seek ways to mitigate their problems rather than just ban them, kind of thing. So. Okay, are we ready for a motion on this one?
Yes. I have a mint in my mouth, so I was not trying to talk. Um, I'll make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item three. Development Services requests ordinance text amendments to Title fourteen to remove data centers as permitted or conditionally uses through all zones.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye. So item three passes unanimously. Um, let's go ahead and get our presentation on item four.
I apologize. We don't have a lot of time for this. Neither do we have a lot of time in the study session. This is covered more in depth in your packet, so feel free to skim that. It's organized by topic of area of concern, water, energy use. So if there's something you have a concern about, feel free to check that as well while I'm talking. So. I was going to cover what a base overlay zone is. I think we're good, but this overlay zone would again be allowed only in the M one and PIC zones as mapped. It would allow data centers and associated energy generation facilities with them. UNPA policy, our power providers policy, is that any data center that deals in over fifty megawatts of energy regularly needs to build its own power generating facility uh, with some additional details. So those would be onsite connected, associated, but only with data centers over that fifty megawatts. Um, this reason, or this, uh, this overlay zone would require a recent application for each potential data center site. So you and the council would both evaluate any new data center applicants coming in. This adds a layer of public scrutiny and also council and planning commission discretion, but it also adds a burden of review, not just administratively for staff, but for appointed and elected officials. So the idea behind setting up the standards the way that we did is that in the absence of any absolute baseline standards, it puts a burden of reporting on the data center applicant to prove why they belong in Provo, why the benefits that they bring to our community offset the environmental costs. And then the commissioners and council can decide whether or not the data center has adequately mitigated these concerns. So I wish we had absolute baseline standards. This is something a lot of other communities are struggling with, but we simply don't. There's a lot of ways to run a data center. There are some that use next to no water, uh, which is great. They reduce the evaporative cooling because that water doesn't go back into our system to the water treatment plant. It gets evaporated. It's a bit of a sink in the water system. But that means that they're using electricity to cool the systems instead. The systems aren't generating less heat. So that means that their energy use is higher, which means that we could require less water, but that means that we're forcing people to use more energy, therefore produce more air pollution, or we could put a limit on efficiency and minimum limit, but uh, then we're forcing them to use more water. So by this standard, we allow flexibility of operation for the site that makes sense. Some sites have more water access than others across Provo. All of our areas would keep it to a fairly small data center. And we could still get over a hundred megawatts pretty easily, but nothing like what we're seeing in Delta. There simply isn't the room for it in Provo. This uh, data center overlay zone complies already, pulls in what UNPA has already adopted for their data center policies of different sizes. They don't have anything for under five megawatts. They can provide energy for that with what's currently on the market. Also, this ties in with the policy and application procedures currently being drafted by council. This is kind of a triggering point to evaluate all of these other policies aggregated into one place. Um, I should also note that we did work with UNPA and the council office and Public Works with their water team and also with some data center developers who are currently working on data center proposals in Provo. And they all agreed that this was reasonable. It was feasible. Everyone was on the same page. This graphic is a lot of text on one page, but it breaks down points in the proposed overlay zone that help address these specific concerns. Uh, UNPA has adequately resolved any concerns we have about increased costs for other ratepayers, other uh, other UNPA Provo Power customers with public bonds, things like that. Um, energy use, uh, in summary, UNPA handles most of the energy use and generation and provision with power purchasing agreements. It would be difficult to require any sort of renewable energy component in a data center's energy portfolio because with recent state law just passed this spring, any renewable energy used to power the data center there onsite as part of their energy portfolio has to have one hundred percent battery backup, and that battery backup is very, very expensive, which would effectively mean that no one's going to choose renewables and requiring then makes data centers financially unviable. Uh, however, we would, in this proposed overlay zone, require a full environmental review, an explanation of not only the renewable energy options and energy efficiency strategies that they chose, but also other common strategies on the market and why they did not choose those as part of a full justification to the appointed and elected officials. Similar for air pollution, they would have to have an air quality analysis and mitigation plan, proof that they have acquired emissions credits if they need them before the building permit is issued. And as we talked about in the study session, building permits kind of act as a regional cap. You can't exceed the overall number. They can only be traded once the maximum has been reached. Uh, with water use, similar strategies, that is unfortunately the most we can require simply because it varies so widely within the industry, the industry and the industry is changing every month. Something new is, is happening. Noise pollution and vibrations, we are not as worried about, uh, those tended to be the case with older, older data centers, but just covering our bases because we never know what way the technology is heading. Um, our noise studies, they would just have to prove that they're in compliance, put the burden of compliance and proof on them. And vibrations, they would have to show a list of strategies, but again, those are pretty well mitigated with common industry strategies. The, under the, you know, additional other category, the council offices, policies and application procedures required community benefit plan. This would be applicants opportunity to justify the positive they could bring to the community, potential job creations. We discussed last time, data centers tend not to create many long-term jobs themselves, but they do attract other data uh, oriented industrial of tech businesses that want to be near data centers for the higher speed. Uh, we also, per a council motion in our last discussion, included a goal that they have to, or not a goal, a, I'm so used to bringing along into plans, everything is goals, a requirement that they have to show how this data center furthers the goal of the general plan and the conservation and resiliency plan. And finally wrapping it up, they have to have an end of life e-waste plan, as that is an increasing concern for our solid waste district. What other information does the planning commission need to make a recommendation to the council?
Amazing.
Um, the thing I had a hard time with, and I think you just said they don't exist, but I'm gonna say it anyway, is it'd be helpful if there were benchmarks for us to compare the number, the numbers that applicants show us, so we know what it compares to. Um, the only time we've heard about a data center, I think we all just kind of were starstruck by the new ideas of cooling without water and, and yes, we need this. And, and so I don't know what constitutes acceptable for most of the points. And I think as a, if we're the body that, that screens it, and for the city council as well, none of them are energy experts and computer experts, and even if you were, it would be hard to understand it all well enough. So um, in the findings of fact, the last line, number three, it says, um, if future policy, planning commissioners and counselors find the plans to be insufficient, they could reject the overlays on. I'm like, how do I know what insufficient is? Aside from lacking the information you've asked for, but I don't know what those numbers mean. I don't know what those statistics and studies mean. So I think it would be really helpful to have to have that in there. Um.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, I have several other.
Because I had the same request, um, and it could be as simple as a histogram showing the distribution of power usage for similar sized or something like that. Just so we know, is this above average, below average, those kinds of things?
Instead of just like, it's gonna be great.
And like, great, thanks. Uh, that number means nothing.
Right, context for the numbers, in other words.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, those are going to change over time. And I kind of like the idea that it's open-ended to account for that fact, that it's gonna change over time.
Yeah, I mean, could you put that into like an appendix or something?
No, I just think that when they present it to us, that that should be something that they show us and this is what this means. I don't, I mean, you can put it in an appendix, but like you said, it is changing. But if every application was required to give data that has context to it so that non-expert bodies can understand whether their plans are sufficient or not, that would be really useful. So whether you put that in an appendix or whether it's something that comes each time.
It's something that's preserved for future, uh, commission and council members.
Yeah, in the, the line requiring, uh, environmental studies and mitigation strategies, we do include lists of common air pollutants that have to be addressed, so we could do a similar sort of thing and energy efficiency analysis, including overall efficiency rating comparison of power and water usage to other common industry standards. What would be the most useful comparing it against other data centers?
Yeah, I would think so.
A similar size probably would be the best.
Yeah.
I think it actually might be viable also to compare it to other industries. Just to have an idea of like, how does this compare to a fast food restaurant to a big box lot, like?
True, or actually a little bit more.
Or like a petroleum engineering plant or?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because we're choosing, it's not that we're choosing just between data centers per se, we're we're choosing between that and other potential uses for the land.
I mean, I'm pretty sure the airport is a very high polluter. You know, like we, there's lots of things we could compare it to that would give us an idea of its impact on the community.
Okay.
Um, just for the record, I love that Public Works is considering a higher tier of water users for people that don't return it to the system. I like that. Um, I like that the burden of proof is on the applicant and that we recognize what standards will protect the residents. Then the other things are, um, in fourteen point three four A point zero five zero, page nine, item number five F. Um, it says that the application has to have a detailed power load and generation plan. And I want to know what person or department is tasked with reviewing this.
That is specifically in the UNPA requirements, so it would be reviewed by UNPA in Provo.
Okay, so maybe, I just want to make sure that that's not something that even like planning staff is reviewing. I feel like an expert needs to review that, so that would be good to know that.
Yeah, it would come to our normal whatever planner is assigned to the task, but we have that CRC, the review committee of different individuals and the, the power representative for that, in charge of reviewing it.
Okay, same section, but the next page J and K. Um, who's tasked with interpreting and representing whether what they um, plan is acceptable by industry standards. So once again, I'm hoping that an expert is reviewing that and not the layman of this committee.
We unfortunately don't have the funding to hire consultant experts for these plans. So no, it would be done by the planning staff as far as I understand, unless we could find additional resources.
But those benchmarks then would be helpful. The ones that we were talking about in my first comment, those would be helpful because it would make all of us have the information that we need to sort of assess that information.
We'd be trusting them to provide their own benchmarks for the industry. It'd be difficult to provide some in this code simply because the benchmarks for this year will be very different from the benchmarks for next year, but they would be provided.
Would, would a permit application or a zone change application for these kind of things that includes a consultant fee? So we could pay for a professional review?
No, I just think if they know, if they know that we need that information and there's a way that we can understand it, because I look at that and go, I don't know if that's energy efficient or renewable or, you know, enough.
That's exactly why I included common industry strategies that they didn't use and why, so that you can hopefully see where they might be trying to cut corners and hide it under the rug. Again, we are trusting that they are giving you an accurate list. And I don't think we'll be seeing data centers coming in often enough or elected and appointed officials to get a real feel for what's common, but it is unfortunately the best that we can do.
Well, I'm sure there's repercussions if they lie, right? And there might be people in this community who will call them out if they know something's off.
Daniel, I was thinking the same thing. Should the application fee include enough funding to pay, to pay a third-party consultant?
Right, I, I know other cities use, use those kind of mechanisms to, on, on more technical things like the, a a geotechnical report or whatever, these different kinds of submissions where we have additional scrutiny and it's paid for by the applicant.
That's a good suggestion to pass along.
And there's not, the applicant can afford this.
Could I maybe make a suggestion that that is a requirement when it's over a certain size? Maybe the smallest ones, that's not a big deal.
Sure. And I don't know what the threshold of that is, because, but whatever.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, like she had the tiers, right? You know, under five megawatts, for example, maybe it doesn't, but once you need a UNPA plan, you're also gonna need a consultancy to, to check this.
Um, A.
Sorry, can I comment on, on that fee? So from my experience on the developer side, if they know upfront, it's just a line item. They could care less what the mound is, as long as they build it in. It just means they'll pay a little less for the land to set that. So I don't know that it matters on the size, as long as we communicate it obviously in the code and make them follow, like, that that's how they're gonna follow through. I don't think develop, the first couple will balk and then everybody else will go, oh, no, that's just how we do it.
Yeah, well, I just, I just think some of these might be pretty small, right? Um, data centers, and so you know, and I'm gonna suggest this overall, that we have a minimum size where this starts applying because if it's too small, then it does become a burden to have a consultant, right? For a small data center, for a local tech company that's trying to do onsite analysis, for example.
Yeah.
Um, and I just don't want that to be a problem when we really don't care because it's super tiny anyway.
The flip, uh, just a point on that, though, is if you put it one of those standards, then do we end up having everyone that comes in sneak underneath the standard and they build five of those?
Right, or they'd have to get it through by us five times, which I don't know. I mean, I'm talking pretty small, so I don't think it would be worth it to them.
So, okay.
If I may, the reason for the split at fifty megawatt is that for, like I said, anything under five, UNPA can provide their current power profile. Between five and fifty, they can provide it, but they would have to purchase it from the market. No additional power plants being built. Over fifty is when the site would have to build its own power generating facility. That is where the emissions come from. Um, if the energy is being already sent to the site from another power source, the emissions are generated wherever that energy is being produced, not onsite within Provo city boundaries. Often we buy that power mix from California or others or other Rocky Mountain local communities. There is still the water usage as soon going up to fifty megawatts, but for concerns like air quality, uh, the concern drops off under fifty megawatts. So that could be an appropriate threshold. It's already a threshold for others. Fifty megawatt hour or fifty megawatts and under is still considered a fairly small data center.
So something to consider there, yeah?
Yeah.
Because you guys are on this board.
Okay.
So I
My next question.
Mm-hmm.
Six A and B seem to kind of conflict with each other because A says you can't have an islanded power plant and then B says, actually, you can.
Oh, you have to build a power plant, but it has to be connected to the grid.
Right, that's A, but B is sort of confusing because it says if it's energy renewable, you just have to have the batteries like to store it, but it, that would also be connected, but why is it a separate item?
In the same way that a backup diesel generator wouldn't be.
I just feel like it's the same item, A and B. They're saying the same thing. It's just like a subset of it, maybe. They're not conflicting items.
Okay, um, so it
It was confusing as I read it because I felt like A made sense. Yeah, we want you to hook in with the system. And then B was like adding to it by saying, if you use renewable energy, you still need to hook into the system and this is how you have to handle it.
The main point of B was requiring onsite battery storage system best to have appropriate earthquake safety casing. There have been a couple of cases, definitely one in New York, I believe, one in Arizona as well, where there was an earthquake or fire, natural disaster that broke some batteries and there was some, some groundwater poisoning. So that is the main point of B.
I just felt like those were a little bit confusing to me as a, I guess most people that are reading it are not going to be me, but. Um, okay, on to the, the UNPA things. I just, because we're using them as our, as our measurement, I want to make sure that we understand in three B on page thirteen. Um, it says that they might need to establish a performance bond. Um, and I want to know who decides how much that bond should be. Is that UNPA that decides that?
That was required per UNPA policy, so yes.
So they'll set the, the cost and that's not something that Provo needs to worry about.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and then same thing with the next page fourteen five C and D. Has Provo established those interconnection agreements and the tariffs and whatever?
They've been established by UNPA as our power provider.
So those are stated in UNPA documents. We don't need to find them because they just weren't here. Okay. I'm almost done.
This could only get so long. It's the longest.
I'm sorry, um, my next one was page seventeen on the cost recovery. Um, in several places in the document, it says that, um, that once UNPA, once they're hooked into UNPA, then the, the ownership and management will be figured out, like, and so how does the support? Figured out like, and so how does the support and the upgrades and enhancements work if, for example, UNPA. Assumes ownership of one of the power plants?
UNPA's policies also say that all operations, all costs associated with providing power to the data center will be borne by the data center owners.
So even though they, even though they maybe assume responsibility for the power plant.
Hmm.
If they know it comes from the data center, they'll be responsible. Okay.
UNPA has made it very expensive for new energy generation facilities to be built, but it's worth it in the data center industry. Yeah.
Awesome. I love how it protects consumers and also allows for the use. So that's it. Just a few things.
Any other questions, comments for staff?
Um, my comment about knowing who these people are when we are supposed to. Allow them to have like long-term, I don't know, a long-term situation in the community. Um, what concerns me is when bad business practices happen and they sort of give people who they've harmed, like the runaround, that kind of thing. And I feel like that should be disclosed to the community so they can, we can like, uh, Provo can decide.
One of the additional, but I ran out of room on this slide, other requirements is a legal entity disclosure. So anyone involved would have to be.
That's, yeah, that's all I'm asking for.
Great. Um, my only other suggestion, I've already kind of made it, is I feel like we need a power minimum when this starts to play, be just because. With tech going how it is, I just see a lot of gray area like. I have a diagnostic company and I've got a lab bench, but most of it's computational. Does that count as a data center? You know what I mean? Like, it's just hard, and I think most of these are about pollution and energy and those kinds of things. So if we say. If it's over a five hundred kilowatt facility, now it counts as a data center or something like that. Um, a real nice definition might be really good.
We could add a definition that includes some sort of scale when something is a data center. I'll bring that to the council.
Awesome.
Can I? Sorry, one more or two more little things. So a few months ago, I was sitting down there and I made a comment, I think it was here, maybe maybe the city council. But about the weight of these buildings. I just think there's a lot we don't know about them. But a developer or a bill contractor who builds them told me that they're like triple the weight per square foot of a normal building. They just are massive. In their impact physically. And so I just think. As we look at like a map of where we're gonna overlay these zones, that that ought to play into it somehow, and I I'm not a geologist. I can't speak to that. But connected to that is that there's so much we don't know. You've clearly left some kind of open-endedness appropriately. And I just wonder if there's some open-endedness because it's gonna change, like, are we gonna be back every six months having another conversation because the industry? Took a turn, or can we actually include some things that give the flexibility to do this more administratively or something like that? Because it clearly is changing fast.
To that point, do we need a geotechnical report as as part of this conditional use? Like what you're talking about, the physical weight?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be, yeah, part of the general evaluation. Yeah.
All right.
No additional concerns. But you're right, they are very heavy buildings.
In terms of water use, um. Some of the regional data centers like to talk about the water offsetting they're doing and how much they're saving. Uh, Prevo River. And they're really effective, uh. Recycled water techniques, but we still have an ongoing drought and I don't see it getting any better with more data centers. Um. I don't even know what my question is, just something feels. Like it's not meshing there between what is being put out. And what would maybe be presented in an application even. I think you can spin an environmental review to look really favorable, even if maybe it's not truthfully.
I'm also the city sustainability coordinator. I definitely hear your concerns. I think. The addition of the cost for a third-party independent consultant of the city's choosing to evaluate this will help expose. Any potential foul play with that, but water concerns are ongoing in our area. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a situation where the city can say, uh, we're sorry, we don't have water for you guys?
When the applicant comes and asks for a rezone.
We can, we can evaluate that. Okay.
Yep. Public Works will also do an evaluation. They're part of our standard rezone evaluation CRC team. And they could say simply that this site doesn't have enough water or we don't overall. Or we have concerns about how much water this is using. All of those would be brought to you in the staff report and in that CRC printout.
Great. Okay, any other questions, comments for Hannah? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open it for public comment. Um, anyone want to comment on this item? Okay, not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close com- uh, public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Can I just say like, great work? Like this is very detailed. It clearly thinks through what's happening now and what. Best you can, what can happen. Um, so I'm excited about this is a better way of approaching, like this is what we want for A to use, right? Like this kind of forward thinking that solves some things, keeps us clarity, all of those things. So thank you, Hannah. Good job.
Well, just for the record, it is asking for a specific rezone on one piece of property for this use. It's similar in some ways.
Wait, not. We don't have a pending up. Oh, okay, yeah. No, but I've just, we approved. A pending. Or we recommended approval on a data center several months ago. So a- and city council denied it when it came up to them, so I'm glad. I'm glad that happened and that we've had a chance to. To work on this more.
Okay, we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll uh. I'll make a motion. Go for it. Um. Item number, um, I move that we recommend approval. To city council that on item number four, Development Services proposes adoption. Of city policy and amendments to Provo City Code Title fourteen to address data processing services, electricity regulating substations. And electric small generation has permitted principal or conditional use of citywide application.
Can we just add to the motion that with the recommendations we gave staff?
Yes, with the recommendations that um commissioner members gave. That we've further addressed.
I'll second that.
Uh, yeah. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Lisa.
It was actually Matt. I just have my mind on.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's start voting.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item four passes unanimously. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you for staying for that.
Thank you guys for.